I'd like to call the Avalon City Council Meeting of Tuesday, March 15th, to order. May we have the roll call, please Denise?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tam Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. And if we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to just have a moment of silence for Mr. Mark Caves, a longtime resident of Avalon and father of three boys and also grandchildren and his lovely wife, Pat. Okay. What's announcements?
I do have some announcements as the city clerk. It's just to remind everybody that our municipal election is held on the second Tuesday of April, which is April 12th. The polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We have two polling locations like we did at our last election. One of the spots will be located here at City Hall in the lobby and the other one is at the St. Catherine's Catholic Church. So be sure you check the back of your books to see where your polling location is. And also on the back of the books is a tear-off thing for vote by mail if you prefer to do it that way. The vote by mails are starting to come in and we'll be processing those and sending those out. And the last day to register to vote is on Monday, March 28th. And the last day to request a vote by mail is Tuesday, April 5th.
Thank you very much. Written communications?
I do not have any.
Okay. Alrighty, then we will go into our first presentation of the evening. It's going to be an update by Southern California Edison on Phase Two water rationing and whatever other great information they'd like to share. So, and you, and you will be, then you will be introducing, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I think the island company was gonna jump in real quick right in front and give an update on the wells.
Oh, in, oh, in front of this?
Yeah, just in front. It wasn't actually on the agenda for presentation.
Or should they come in under oral conversation? Come on that poll.
It was all part of the request that I had given earlier for a water update.
Okay.
Anything, Paul, or Mayor? To allow me to provide a small review representing the island company with an update on the wells that we built in Avalon. As, as you all know, we're, we and other Catalina Island stakeholders are evaluating multiple potential water resources, including the new addition to the D cell plant at Pebble Beach, conversion of the city's wastewater treatment system to a reclaimed water system, private reverse osmosis systems, new groundwater wells, and various storage facilities, including for rainfall and stormwater runoff. Last year, we obtained approval from the Planning Commission for a proposed test well project, which included drilling up to three bedrock wells in Avalon Canyon, undertaking a pump test of the aquifer, and gathering information to determine if a feasibility of the new water resource. Edison was directly involved with us from the beginning of this effort, as they were sensitive about any impact this project might have on the Catalina Island rate pair. For water system flexibility, reliability, and affordability, they were keenly interested in an incremental water resource that would be completely independent of the Middle Ranch Reservoir System and the D cell plant, and one that would not have a capital cost to the rate pair. So the island company undertook the upfront risk capital, now close to a million dollars, to drill and pump test the new wells. It cost us a little more than we originally anticipated in our budget because we went deeper than originally planned. All three wells were drilled to about 600 feet in depth versus 400 feet, partly because we hit continuous bedrock rather than fractured rock, which potentially would yield more water. As of now, two of the three wells appear to be potential water resources. Our hydrogeology consultants are currently evaluating the quality and quantity of potable water that could be produced on a sustainable basis. And early indications are that the water quality is good, i.e. potable, and that we may be able to produce somewhere between 50 and 100 acre feet of water each year. The test results are expected in the next few weeks and will result in a go or no-go decision for us. Whatever the outcome, the test procedures and the results will be published in a comprehensive report. It will be made available to the general public and will be discussed in public open forums. At this time, our hydrogeology and biology consultants do not foresee any significant impact on the environment, including the potential for saltwater intrusion into the aquifer. In addition, no sensitive biological or cultural resources, including native habitat, jurisdictional waters, or historical archaeological resources are present, and no wildlife impacts are expected. There are no sensitive riparian habitats or significant ecological areas in the immediate vicinity of the wells or downstream of the wells. Our consultants are prepared to handle the long-term environmental studies necessary for the next steps in the process. If the wells prove to be a viable resource, we will request additional capital from the SCI CO Board of Directors in order to fund the next stage of development. We will then apply to the Avalon Planning Commission to complete the necessary SEQA environmental studies and SICA Municipal Drinking Water Permit. Our agreement with Edison is similar to the one developed for the D cell plant. It provides that we will pay 100% of the estimated $2 million cost to develop this new resource if it's viable. And we will work closely with Edison on the engineering, design, and construction of all the infrastructure facilities to add it to the distribution system. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
That was very thorough, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got a question. Does the island company still want half that water for their own use, private use?
Yes, we do.
You want half, half of the people's water for your own private use?
It's-
$2 million is a pretty cheap price to pay for that water if you get it for free from that point on.
Well, the other, the other alternative is that Edison could pay for the whole thing and it would be added to the rate payer's cost.
Who, who did the research on the impacts to the natural resources in the surrounding area? Did, was the conservancy involved in that?
No, it wasn't.
The conservancy wasn't?
This is preliminary studies for the test wells.
Okay.
The conservancy will be, I'm sure, part of the discussion with the consultants as we go forward, if we go forward to do the new well. We're only in step one of the process.
Okay, um, yeah, that, I, I, I'd like to, I'd like to know more about the research that you're doing on that, because I'm really concerned about our natural resources, not just downstream, but upstream as well. I mean, there's a lot of native plants and animals that survive because of this water down here in the basin. And it's fed from up top, so it's gonna deplete the water source up above.
It's a valid concern and all of those studies and issues will be addressed if we go forward and as we go forward.
Okay.
And, and it will be a public hearing when they go forward, and so we'll be able to get all the reports and look at them and have our own people look at them to validate-
Before they, before they go forward.
Well, yeah, yes, yes.
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 Can I admit to you crazy about, about the island company getting free water after they go ahead and drill these wells? I, I don't think that's a good idea.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. My name is Jeff Lawrence, Project Manager for Southern California Edison, here to give you an update on our Stage Two Water Rationing Plan, as well as our D cell plant number Our reservoir currently sits at 195 acre feet. Since the, the winter season, the, the reservoir level has held fairly steady. We've been able to meet demand in the city of Avalon with the existing desalination plant. So, you've seen very little drawdown in the, the New Year so far. We continue to see a, a real positive trend with the community's water conservation efforts. You'll see February was another outstanding month. We reduced water usage by almost 37%. This while visitor counts went up an extraordinarily high amount, almost 67% in the month of February. February was a very warm month, I think it attracted a lot of visitors, but the conservation numbers remained very constant during the month. So, I want to commend the community and the visitors for their, their conservation efforts. This was a reduction of 7.05 acre feet compared to February of last year. Looking at the previous 12 months, we've been able to reduce water use by 43%. This while visitor counts are up near 29% for this 12-month period. And this is compared to our baseline period of June 2012 through May 2013. And this is resulting in a savings of 165 acre feet during that time, which is about an eight-month supply of water. If you look at the entire time we've been in Stage Two Water Rationing and compare it to the baseline period for the same number of months, we've actually been able to reduce water use by almost 240 acre feet. So it's, it's really done a tremendous job in preserving our Middle Ranch Reservoir resources during this continual drought. We still have code enforcement and continue to have code enforcement for our water use violations. In the last month since last met with you, we've actually had seven new violations, which brought our total up to 135. And this is, for instance, watering that, that causes runoff, watering within 48 hours after a storm, those types of infractions we're enforcing. What this chart is showing you here are the monthly customer accounts that close, and it's showing you, the red line is showing you the number of bills that resulted in a second violation or more. So this includes a number of customers that have been repeat offenders. The blue line is showing you the customers that have received their second violation for the first time. So we've extracted those, those second-time violators from the blue line. You'll see that consistently since we've started rationing, the first-time offenders range between 1 and 2%. For the repeat offenders, we're consistently between 6 and 7% over the last six months or so. So another way of looking at this is 93%, 92% of our community is adhering to their water allotments and doing a great job with their conservation efforts. As far as flow restrictor installations, we are now, we have issued 553 flow restrictors from customers that have had the, the second violation. The breakdown on that is 428 residential and 125 commercial. I would now, now like to move to an update on our D cell plant number two project. I had informed the, the council last month that we were working with the Division of Drinking Water to get our drinking water permits issued for our seawater mode and our brine mode. The seawater mode being the first one that we are working with the Division of Drinking Water on. There were some, some delays that we have been working with DDW and they've been very supportive and responsive into our requests. We actually flew up to Sacramento, met with their Deputy Director and Assistant Deputy Director, and they're very encouraged by the efforts that we have in Catalina to address the drought and are gonna provide additional resources to review our technical report and our amended permit. So we have two different engineers now, one dedicated to the seawater mode and then one dedicated to the brine mode. So we want to commend the, the Division of Drinking Water to be responsive to getting these permits issued before the summer season. Currently, the, the seawater mode permit is gonna be issued by late March, according to Division of Drinking Water. This is a slip of about a week or so from what I reported to you last month, but we have a real high degree of confidence that we'll have this permit by the end of this month. The seawater mode, we're still targeting late June, but the Division of Drinking Water is gonna do everything they can to actually have that amended permit issued prior to that. At this point, they can't commit to it yet, but they are, as I said, providing additional resource for this permit review. So we'll have the, the plant running in seawater mo, in brine mode by, before summertime. As far as Stage Three, we, we still plan on having an announcement on any further stages of rationing come mid-April, and the, Stage Three could occur as, as early as June. We're still, there's still a number of variables that we're waiting to assess and analyze before a final determination is made. We don't want to make a knee-jerk reaction and then we find out we get some significant rain that increases the water level in the Middle Ranch Reservoir. So by the end of March, we'll make a determination and communicate that at the next City Council meeting in April. We'll make sure to communicate to the public, as we did when we implemented Stage Two in 2014, with a public meeting, as well as direct mailing to all our customers, which is with as much notice as possible, so they can plan and prepare. As we communicated previously, the percentage of rationing will, will be below 50%. We don't know what that percentage will be, that's one reason why we're holding off as well, to make a determination on what that percentage will be. And there's still a chance that we may just continue with Stage Two Water Rationing. So another reason why we want to hold off until the end of March to make a final determination. And we received some questions from Councilmember Cassidy. One of those questions is, did pertain to the desalination plant, so I wanted to take a moment to address that question now. That question was, what will the amount of water from the second D cell unit actually be able to produce? And where do the change in gallons per day come from based on initial agreements and discussions? Initial projections during preliminary engineering indicated the new plant could potentially produce 150,000 gallons of water per day. Due to our Stage Three forecast at that time, which was fall of last year, Edison agreed to take on a very aggressive timeline for this very complex project. At the time, we knew that those projections were subject to change during engineering, commissioning, and permitting. And I'll remind you all that because of the aggressive timeline, we're actually doing design and construction at the same time. Due to various technical components that cannot be identified until significant engineering had been completed, potential projections, potential production projections have been revised to 125,000 gallons per day for what we're calling the brine mode. And that's where the, the brine discharge that would normally be sent out to the ocean is actually the source water for the new desalination unit, which is really a first-of-its-kind desalination plant, where your, your source water is brine, brine water from another desalination unit. Currently, D cell plant number two is estimated to produce additional 59,000 gallons per day in what we're calling the seawater mode. A final daily maximum production amount will not be determined until commissioning and permitting is complete, which we're, we're currently underway on. So once we've completed those, those stages, we'll be able to communicate a final production number two. Are there any questions on Stage Two or the desalination number two plant project?
I have a question. What is the reason that, and you might have mentioned this before, what is the reason we're u, using the brine from the first unit to operate the second unit? Because from some of the, from some of the input that I've gotten, the, it costs more money to, to operate the, the, the second desalination unit. When you run the brine through it and it's, and has heavier effects on the wear and tear of the desal, desalination unit itself from the brine, so why aren't we just using regular seawater again instead of the brine?
So we'll have, we'll have the flexibility to bypass the existing plant, run seawater to the new unit.
Okay.
It's a more efficient unit and it'd be the preferred mode, depending on what the level of demand is. The preferred mode would be to run the new desalination plant. However, in the, the summer months, that mode won't meet demand. So without getting additional permits and installing new seawater wells, taking that brine discharge for our source water was the quickest, most cost-effective way to provide additional drinking water for the community. So if you, if we were to embark on a new, new desalination plant where we were installing new seawater wells, the permitting that you would need would be much more extensive. We are not increasing the seawater that we're extracting from the ocean with this project. So it, it was the quickest way to bring additional drinking water to the community at this time to respond to the drought.
Excellent. Okay, thanks for that answer.
Sure.
Jeff, can I just get a clarification from you, and you may have said it and I may have missed it? The, the, one of the questions was, we, even though we're able to produce the need of the water right now, this time of year, strictly from the D cell plant, the reservoir is still dropping. So could you just give a brief of where, where else is being drawn from the reservoir so that we, we can kind of explain that it's not necessarily us here in Avalon that are the only ones using the reservoir water?
Yeah, absolutely. There's several other questions that we received from Councilmember Cassidy, and I actually have Mike Mabon, manager from our Pebble Beach staff, to answer those remaining questions.
Sorry.
So I'll be happy to turn over to Mike unless there's any other D cell or Stage Two related questions.
Thanks, Jeff.
Very good. Thank you, Jeff.
No problem.
Okay, so I'm from Virginia, so I'm, I'm very southern, so what an honor it is for me tonight to be able to speak to the Council of Avalon. So, Honorable Mayor Annie Marshall and to council members, I appreciate the opportunity. And I'm getting ready to celebrate my anniversary of one year on the island, so I, thank, thank you very much. So, I have worked for Southern California Edison for almost 13 years. I worked at San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station, and I have been a member of the city of Avalon for one year, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I have a few questions from Councilman, Councilperson, sorry, Cindy Cassidy. Some Avalon residents are wondering about the operational status of the D cell plant, and this is the existing plant. So, the existing plant has been operational since July of 2013. And in recent days, with the plan to put on an additional D cell plant, we have had to shut down the unit or have a period of downtime to sample and perform commissioning tests. So there have been some periods where the existing D cell plant is, is not operational. And, and that is to satisfy the requirements and show the Division of Drinking Water that we are providing quality water to our customers. And I am a customer because I'm a member of the city of Avalon, so I appreciate that. So currently, we are capable of producing about 2,000 gallons of water per day. So, that's, that's quite a bit.
200?
200,000?
200,000. Did I, did I say that? I'm sorry. 200,000 gallons of drinking water per day. So, so with the water that we intake from the ocean, we're able to process that and produce about 200,000 gallons of water per day. Okay, the next question is, please explain why the reservoir level is decreasing, why the existing D cell unit is producing more than the demand level. So, as you can imagine, during the winter months, we don't have as many visitors, we're producing a lot of water, we're producing 200,000 gallons of water per day. So you're thinking there's a surplus of water. So, that, that is the case. However, in Avalon, our usage of water or our consumption of water is about 160,000 gallons of water per day. All water is produced by the existing D cell unit, which, which is in operation, but does not include the residents who live in Hamilton Cove or Middle Ranch or the various camps. So drinking water to these areas has a direct impact to the reservoir. So basically, the water that they consume is processed from that reservoir and it depletes the level in which that reservoir currently has. In addition, there are natural factors. As you can imagine, when it's hotter, we have evaporation, so there's more evaporation. So we have evaporation of the water that's in our reservoir. And another issue is, we have seepage. So, water is seeping into the ground, it goes down to the aquifer, but it does decrease our level within our reservoir. Okay, our next question is, why don't we dredge the reservoir to increase surface water storage? Okay, so I think the first issue, because I think it's issue that really the residents of Avalon and the people of Catalina think about is, what, what is this gonna cost me? It is very, very, very expensive for us to spend the money. It's, about seven years ago, we, Southern California Edison, asked for an estimate from various contractors to determine what is the cost to dredge our reservoir. And at that point, it was $8 million. So that's $8 million shared with every rate pair within our island. That, that's quite a cost. So, we have to think about, we have to think about what are the benefits of spending this money on dredging our reservoirs? In the last 25 years, we have had to, we have had spillage of seven times. So there's been seven times where we've had rainstorms that have produced so much rain that our reservoirs are overspilling. And think about that, 25 years. So seven times, so seven times, we are gonna spend $8 million, and that was seven years ago. So, you know what the cost of inflation is? That's a lot of money to consider for our rate payers. And you know what? I told you at the beginning, I have been here for one year. I am a rate payer. I live in this beautiful island of Catalina. And I've ta, I've talked to Annie Marshall about this, our mayor. That's, that's a lot of money, you know? It, it does impact me also. Okay? So, and when you also think about it, you gotta think about, if we dredge our reservoir, we have to think about when we remove the silt. The silt is gonna come back, so it's only a temporary benefit. And if you think about it, that silt has to be evaluated. So, is it hazardous material? Is it not? So, the cost of that goes to every one of you and me. So it's really important, so we have to really think about that.
Is it hazardous material?
I don't know. I can't answer that question, Joe.
I hope it's not.
And I appreciate you asking that. And you ask that because you're concerned. I'm concerned also. I don't know.
You, you guys probably should know, shouldn't you?
We will know.
Somebody should know.
Because I, I can tell you this, Joe, everything that Southern California disposes of, as far as like the silt from our reservoirs, we would evaluate. We would not just throw it away just carelessly. We do care about our citizens, our, our, basically, our citizens of the island. Because if you think about it, we have 60 to 70 employees, they're all residents of this island, and we all care about this island. Whether we're a Southern California Edison employee or not, we care about this island. I care about this island.
Mm-hmm.
And I have another home, and my boss sometimes says, "Mike, where's your home?" My home is in Avalon. And you know what? I care about this island. So everything that we removed from our reservoir, I want it to be evaluated, I want it to be determined whether it is hazardous or not. So, I can tell you this, we will have it evaluated and we will determine whether it's hazardous or not. And I care that you care about the disposition of that material.
Well, I'm asking for the, for the people that I represent, that we all represent, if, if, I mean, if there's hazardous material in our drinking water, we certainly want to know, and I would think that you, you Edison would know as well.
I can tell you this, Joe, every bit of water that is delivered to the members of Catalina Island, which I'm a member of, is, is signed, sealed, and delivered from the Department or Division of Drinking Water. Everything has been verified. We send our water samples, there's multiple water samples that are sent off to the Division of Water. of Water. And I will tell you, I'm the compliance manager, which I didn't introduce myself, so my boss will ding me on that. I am Mike Maven, I am the compliance manager for Southern California Edison. But I can tell you this, that everything that we deliver to our customers, I drink, it is evaluated by laboratories and it is approved by the Division of Drinking Water to be of high quality to serve to our customers, of which I am a customer. So I, I do appreciate you asking that question. Did that answer your question?
No, no, you, you can answer my question when you guys do your research and find out whether or not that soil is contaminated or not.
I can tell you this, Joe. I can tell you that if we did spend rate payers' money to dredge the reservoir, that we would evaluate all of that solid that we pull from the reservoir. And we would ensure, number one, that it was not considered hazardous. And if it was considered hazardous, number one, Edison clearly communicates to our consumers what the results, and we would also ensure that it is disposed of in an appropriate manner.
Well, it might be good rich soil, too. I mean, it-
It could be. And you know what? Maybe our island needs that soil.
But I think we need to know. That's, that's my point.
And I, I will tell you this, Joe, I appreciate you asking.
Yes.
But I will tell you that whatever the results of the, if, if we did decide to spend the money, our rate payers' money, to dredge our reservoir, that we would dispose of whatever solids in the appropriate manner.
Um, that's not my point. My point is, we're drinking out of that fountain, we're drinking out of that pool, out of that pond, that reservoir, that lake. And, and there's been the suggestion that, that that soil is, is hazardous or contaminated or, I mean, that suggestion, I think, I, I don't know if it's just to convolute the whole point of dredging, but I, I'd like to know, people would like to know. If there's a problem with the soil that our waters, that our drinking water is in.
You know what?
That's my point. And I've asked this question before, actually.
I appreciate Jeff reaching out to me. But you know what? I have this with uncertainty. Southern California Edison, Catalina District, would not provide to you water that was not of high quality, approved by the Division of Drinking Water, for you to drink. I can tell you this, every morning that I wake up, I drink water that is provided from Southern California Edison as a member of this community. And I can assure you that that water is of high quality, of high standard, that meets the Division of Drinking Water quality without 100% certainty. I assure you that. And, and I'm willing to talk to anyone, anybody after this meeting. I can honestly say that with total confidence.
I'd say we have a real good water supply. I drink it, my, my family drinks it.
All right, I like it, Joe.
All the people, the children that, you know, I know and love. I have the biggest family on this island.
You know what, Joe? If you didn't care, you wouldn't ask. So I'm telling you, and whether you trust me or not, I can honestly tell you that the water that is delivered to the residents of Catalina Island is 100% sure that it complies with Division of Department of the Water District that is compliant. We would not, under no circumstance, and whether I was a Southern California Edison employee or not, I can tell you, that water is of high quality. And that's all I have to say.
Mike, is there, were you guys able to talk a little bit about water storage?
We're going to talk about that.
Okay.
So I appreciate that. Um, okay, so we're going to move on. And Joe, if you'd like to talk to me after this meeting, I appreciate it. You care about, you represent the citizens of Catalina. So if you want to talk to me, which you've been in my office and I appreciate that, you're a go-getter, so I would love to talk to you, okay?
Okay, and then we can come back to the subject and after you guys do some testing on that soil out there to make sure. That way I can make an announcement to the public that there's nothing wrong with the soil that our water sits, sits under.
Okay. So the, the key thing, Joe, is you've got to remember, do we want to pass the cost of dredging our reservoir?
I'm not even talking about dredging, I'm talking about the condition of the soil that our water sits in and under and above. That's all.
Well, I think the key thing, Joe, I think the key thing is what we deliver to our customers, right? The quality of the water that you drink every day, whether it's for you to have nourishment or take your pills, like before I came here, I have a, um, a condition where I have to take a pill. I would not drink water from Catalina if I knew that it was not of high quality. And you know what? As a member of this island, as a resident of this island, which I am, I would not drink the water if I did not know that it is sure to be of high quality.
I understand.
So we can, we, and I appreciate, you know what? You are representing your people, our people, the members of our community. And you know what? We will have this conversation, that just means you're a go-getter. I appreciate it, Joe.
You're the one that brought it up.
Okay, so the next question, I'm sorry. What about additional storage for water produced by the D cell plant during winter months when demand is decreased? So as you can imagine, during the winter months, we see a decrease in consumption of water. So we have a D cell plant, an existing D cell plant, that's producing about 200,000 gallons per day. And our consumption rate during the winter months is about 160,000 gallons per day. So we have 40,000 gallons and we're like, well, what are we going to do with those 40,000 gallons? So Cindy and, and people that have talked to Cindy have asked her, well, what are we going to do with the 40,000 gallons? So one thing that you have to remember, you know, I, I mean, a lot of people, I mean, Annie and I have had a conversation about water storage. She said, Mike, let's have more water storage, you know? In fact, I think she's even volunteered at her house. But anyway, um-
Thanks, Annie.
The thing, the thing about it is, is, you know, water that is, is processed cannot be stored in a storage unit and left. It has to be treated, it has to be processed, it has to be circulated, it cannot be stagnated. Because if it does, it creates possible harmful effects to the people that would drink that water. And remember, I said to you, I'm a member of this community, I am not going to drink water that would cause me harm. So number one, I live next to a councilman and a mayor. I would not serve water, I would not allow my company through my boss, who really cares about this island, we would not serve water to this island. There's no way. It's not possible. So I'm telling you, again, you've got to think about this. You've got to think about, if we have extra storage tanks, we have to have ways to move that water. And every storage tank that we have on the island, you've got to think about, it's a cost to me, it's a cost to you. Because you know what? I pay for every tank on the island because I'm a rate payer. So you have, really have to think about that. You have to think about the cost to our rate payers. I know, I'm going long, I'm sorry. I'm southern. Okay, so, and then another thing you have to think about our reservoirs is, you know, there's seepage. There's, there's also evaporation. You know, on the hot days, that water goes away. Water depletes from our reservoirs because it goes up to the heavens. And then another thing you have to think about is you have to think about, okay, so some people are thinking, you know what? Let's dredge the reservoirs. So we're going to increase this demand or we're going to increase this storage area for water. But in the last 25 years, we have had seven occasions where we have had so much rain that we have had spillage in our reservoir. Think about that. In the last 25 years, we have had seven occasions where we have had spillage in our reservoirs. Is it really worth, in se, the last, uh, in seven years previous to this year, it was estimated that it would cost eight million dollars?
Do you know when the last time the reservoir was dredged?
I don't know, Joe, but I can tell you this, I can tell you this.
It was about 15 years ago.
Let me tell you, Joe. I can tell you this, seven years ago, it was eight million dollars to dredge that reservoir. As a resident of this island, and we've only had seven occasions in the last 25 years, do I want to spend that money? No. You know what I'd rather do? I'd rather spend that money on our community, whether it's going to a movie or it's going to a restaurant or whatever the case is. Is it worth it for our residents? I say no. And you know what? I talked to Annie about this. And you know what? We would rather spend it spending time with our businesses in our island and giving them the money because we appreciate what they do.
See, I really appreciate what you do and what Edison does and I, I understand all that. But when we start running out of water, when it comes out of the tap, I don't care what the price is, people are going to want that water. So, so we, we're talking about cost, that's one thing. I'm not understanding exactly where it costs eight million dollars to dredge the reservoir just to take some dirt out and get rid of the dirt.
I can tell you this, Joe, I appreciate that. It's because you care about the people of this island. And you know what? This is going to sound cliche and I know people are going to go like, oh my God, here it goes, Southern California Edison talk. But you know what? We are never going to leave you dry. Because if you're dry, I'm dry and I'm not going to be dry.
Is that water, is the water from Middle Ranch, is it being shipped to anywhere else on the island you know of from Middle Ranch or from pump station number two? Is it being directed anywhere else? Would it be being delete, depleted from any other type of a, a source?
That is a question that we, we are looking at, we're looking at intertieability for the whole system to ensure that we have a sufficient water supply to all areas. And I can tell you this, we ensure that water is supplied 24 hours a day, seven days a week, throughout the island. Water will be delivered by Southern California Edison.
Okay, so Middle Ranch water is actually, it's not just coming to Avalon, it's going to other places as well, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, I think we're moving to the last question. Okay, what about additional storage for water produced by the D cell plant during winter months when demand, when demand decreases?
Okay, I'm sorry, Michael, you already answered that question.
Okay, so you're good with that?
We're great with that. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, thank you again, I appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions for me?
There's one right behind you.
I knew there was going to be.
Come on up, Allison.
Allison, Nosinski, 356 Sumner. I was wondering about the evaporation issue. Is there a reason if we're losing substantial amounts of water due to evaporation in the reservoir?
Allison, you've got to speak into the mic.
Sorry, no, it's tall. Uh, if we're losing substantial amounts of water from the reservoir due to evaporation, is there a reason we're not covering more of the reservoir? Or is there a reason we're not using monomolecular film or something to decrease the evaporation rate? And, you know, I'm aware from swimming pools that we lose about four feet a year due to evaporation in this area. If it's substantially more than that, I'd like to know why. Also, I, I'm wondering, when you keep using the term rate payers, you don't just mean the people who live in Avalon, you mean all the millions of Southern California rate payers, right? That we would spread that amongst? And if not, why do we supply, we pay for their water, why don't they pay for ours?
Elsa, thank you very much. Okay, so the question regarding rate payers. So the rate payers, basically for the water that is delivered to Catalina, we, we basically are talking about the people that live on Catalina Island. We're not talking about the people that live in Oceanside or the people that live in Regondo Beach and different places. We are responsible. So I, I think that answers the question. So we, we are the rate payers. I'm the rate payers, you are the rate payers, you are the rate payers.
And if I can add to that, it's because this is the only place where they are in the water business, is on that, we don't do water anywhere else.
Right.
So that's why it's on us.
That is true, Annie. Did I answer the question? Okay, what was that called?
Evaporation.
Evaporation. So Elsa, I have one of the great people that work with me, her name is Tracy Dayton, she is a project manager. Tracy is going to take down your question and we are going to provide you an answer. So please get with Tracy after this presentation. We'd be more than happy and, and we really do care about the question that you answered. You deserve an answer. Okay, so honorable mayor Annie Marshall, we appreciate it. Council members, we appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. And as a member of this community, I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Michael. That was very thorough and thank you Cindy for coming up with some great questions.
Michael, one question. What's it going to take to get Mr. Height here at one of our meetings? If I remember right, at one time he was telling us he was the water expert of the island and I would sure like to see what he has to say if we could schedule him to come to one of our meetings personally.
You know what? I can tell you this, Rich. I'm sure that Mr. Height would love to speak to city council, he talks about it frequently. Uh, there are, there are folks that work in the city that work for Southern California Edison. Mr. Height has been quite busy with lots of different projects, as you can imagine, so it's not just about the water. So I will definitely, I will have Tracy take that back and we will ensure that Mr. Height's definitely engages with our city council and participates. And hopefully, that doesn't mean that I have not represented Mr. Height on his behalf because I can tell you, I have never worked for anyone that has the standards quite like Mr. Height, but I do appreciate that. And like I said, as a member of the, the great island of Catalina, you know, everything that impacts you, that impacts Annie, that impacts everyone, impacts me also. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, a lot of those questions were actually community questions and were online. So I just compiled everything and sent an email with a couple extras, so I want to-
Great, thank you.
Make sure that's not all me.
Okay, that was the most-
Thank you very much, you guys, for coming.
Okay, city manager report.
I have none.
Okay. City attorney report.
At the next meeting, Elizabeth Hall will be here, I'll be off with my wife, we're celebrating our 25th anniversary. The main item on the agenda will be the housing RFP for, to send out to developers to get proposals to use our housing money. So that'll be a real big study session for that. That's all I have. The notice of availability of funding that we're sending out to developers to come forward with plans.
But she, but she was going to give us even more information than just that, though?
Right.
Okay, all right, good. All righty, perfect. Anything else, sir?
Nope.
All righty, council member reports. Can we start with?
Sure. Um, I attended the Gateway Cities Council of Government meeting on March 2nd. A couple notable items, there is a regional assistance workshop coming up for cap and trade. Um, this is about specifically teaching us how to potentially go after some of the revenues regarding the greenhouse gas revenues that are being received. And, and both Audra and Jordan, I think, are going to attend this workshop, so that'll be great for the city. I was a little concerned that Avalon did not show up on the homeless count for 2015. For, I, I did know that one was done for 2016, but if there is any information, if there was a count done on 2000, in 2015, January of 2015, I'd like to get that information over. Um, there's obviously potentials for funding and other opportunities. And so I know we have some numbers from 16 and I will reach out to the person who handled that this year and see if we can get those on there. And, um, the, also, what came this week was the- And, um, the, also, what came this week was the unemployment rates for, let's see, the latest ones that came out were for January, and I went back through each of the months. Back in May of 2015, the unemployment rate for Avalon was six point one percent, and then for January, our unemployment rate has gone down to five percent. So, we're moving in the right direction. So, those were the notable things from that meeting.
Great.
And that's all I have.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yeah, just acting on, a couple people started complaining about the crosswalks on Crescent and Clarissa down there. The one that comes off the beach and the one that comes this way. And I noticed, driving it quite frequently, that we're getting a lot of backup on that corner. I mean, more than usual. And it usually starts from Crescent all the way back to Third Street, and it's just getting outrageous. I'm kinda wondering if we can't just put that wall back up to keep people on the other side of the beach walkway, to steer them right down Crescent Avenue, instead of making it all congested up there for the city and anybody that's traveling that way in a vehicle. It takes a while to get through there. I'd see, like to see us give direction to rebuild that wall and put it back on and keep everybody back on there. I mean, that's just some of the complaints I've got.
That crossing over to the picnic fry and-
Yeah, and it's just a mess.
Where the wall got crashed into.
And they never built it back up, the Serpentine Wall. It was a Serpentine Wall. It was keeping everybody to that side, the beach side, walking along and keeping them from going in the middle of the street.
And the council at that time thought it was good to have that wall open, but whatever the direction is from council, we will make sure it gets done.
I would like to see it get done.
I agree.
And I'd like to see that go myself.
Yeah.
Put it back, it's just very congested down there. For emergency vehicles and anybody else going that way, it's terrible.
It's kinda dangerous for the pedestrians, too. Because you can find yourself halfway out into that crosswalk, and then somebody walks across the adjacent crosswalk, and then you're stuck in between one crosswalk and the other. It's, it's a great idea, I think, Beetle.
I'd like to see us give direction to the city manager to act on that.
I agree, but do you have an opinion, Ollie?
That's fine.
Yeah.
It was an experiment.
Can we, can we do that? Get it done?
I think Dennis heard you loud and clear.
And if it's over five thousand dollars, we'll come back with a, an order for the council.
Is this something we do in-house, though?
Yes.
Yeah. So, we got direction on that, as soon as we can, right now, as soon as we can.
Thank you.
By tomorrow afternoon?
Tonight. No, that's all I have for report. People were complaining about it to me.
Councilman Simpson?
Um, yes. So, I hear the museum is going to have a grand opening sometime in June, and I'm just curious, is there water, is there water for that building up to this point? Do we know? Do they have water allocation?
I don't think so.
I thought they had, we had to get out of-
They got approved for that water, that air to water, like our machine in the back, but there's like a commercial-sized one.
Okay, so they're good to go with the water, that is?
They're not getting piped in water, they're-
They're gonna make their own.
Make their own from air.
Huh, that's interesting. Okay, I had another concern, and I, I'm gonna just lay it out there, but I think I should have asked, I thought Paul De Meyer and Chris Wilhelm were gonna stick around. And it was about this well up on the golf course that was vandalized, and I wanted to know, and I'd like to know, I'd like to ask staff to reach out. I wanted, because there's a ten thousand dollar fine out for that, I wanna know if the water, there was a problem with the water, if what, what, what happened to that well? Why is there a ten thousand dollar fine? And is there any long-term effects to the water itself? Because we had concerns about this before these, these five hundred foot holes were drilled down into our bedrock aquifer, that things like this could possibly happen. I heard that there was, could have been diesel fuel, coffee, rocks, things were thrown down in there.
The only thing that I heard was it was like yogurt, a yogurt container or something like that, is the only thing I heard, but, but maybe they could-
They must have a report.
The police should have the report.
We should ask, we should reach out for, to the, DuDeck Consulting, because they were the ones who were basically managing the project, a Cascade Drilling Company, and I think the sheriffs might have had some, something to do with it, and we need to, and then the island company, we need to find out what, what damage was done to that. Because that was my main concern to begin with, was something like that happening. So-
Joe, I can tell you that that was the request that I originally gave to the island company, is if they could give a public update on what that was all about. And they, the update that they did give is what was happening with all the wells and the water studies, but because the investigation is underway, they didn't want to give too much information publicly that would hinder the investigation to try to figure out what, what was, what, what happened. They didn't want to speak too many details, so.
Okay.
But we did, we did ask them, and I would just probably go back in another couple weeks and see if they could, could give us any more information on that.
Okay, great. I appreciate that, and I know that, that the people in, in the community appreciate that. Because we need, we need to know if there was some, some long-term damage done to that water supply down there. And, let's see. That's all, that's all I'm gonna announce for tonight. Thank you.
Last Monday? The mayor and I went to a meeting with the water consortium, Edison, the Conservancy, USC, in beautiful Rosemead. We luckily didn't get back that day because they canceled all the votes, but it was okay. Fairly informative, a lot of stuff that Jeff went over this evening, and we talked about last Tuesday. We're also talking about some new possible rate structures that they're gonna look into. So, it was a couple hours in beautiful Rosemead in the rain. And then I've got a concern. Down in front of Lloyd's, there's been a plate in the street for, I don't know, six weeks, two months? Big, big iron plate in there. Is it ever gonna get out of there?
I made a call to Edison's representative yesterday on that thing. Councilmember Cassidy has asked me about it a couple times. We've hit him up a couple times. They had to order special valves to replace. They came in. They came in on Monday. So, Edison, what they tell me is making plans to install that beginning of next week. And they apologize for the long delay.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Okay, and I just wanna say, last week, I had the opportunity to go to Mr. Ruolo's senior civics class and talk about city government. Ruolo, is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah.
Yeah. And anyway, it was, it was a blast. The kids were, you know, I just said, what kind of things would you like to see? And they talked about, of course, recreation, and talked about the drug problem a little It was fun. It was just a lot of fun, so, I didn't tape it to play it back, so, anyway. But I'm gonna go to his, his next, on Thursday, I go to his other senior class, so. That's it. All righty.
Anybody know about skate, downhill skate competition? Are we still gonna have that this year?
Yes, I just spoke to Justin last Friday. He's, was gonna try to come over this week. He apologized for being so delinquent. He's filling out his special application, which, as you know, we always reserve for repeat events. And they're also talking about extending it one additional day, so it'll be Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, as soon as we have our first meeting with them, we'll report back.
Okay, for a day? You mean, we don't have the day?
It's, it's still that first weekend of May.
First weekend of May.
I wanna say fourth, fifth, sixth, but I don't have the calendar.
Catalina Classic downhill skate competition, okay.
Oral communication. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on matters not on the agenda. We limit you to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
I will be quick. Audra McDonald, I'd like to remind the public that the city's Dial-A-Ride program is not going away. On the agenda tonight is an item to extend the contract with Catalina Transportation Services through May thirty-first, 2016. If approved, CTS will honor Dial-A-Ride, all Dial-A-Ride tickets through May thirty-first. CTS has kindly offered to provide continued service while the city is finalizing the request for proposal process. Once the RFP process is complete, and an operator for the city's transit program is chosen, which includes the continuance of Dial-A-Ride, the city will advertise in both papers, the digital signboard, city of Avalon website, and perform public outreach. To be certain, all of the city's Dial-A-Ride users are informed regarding contact information, fares, and anything else related to the transit program. If you have any questions regarding the city's transit program, and people have called, and I've called them back, so I always call back, please feel free to call me at three one oh five one oh oh two two oh, extension one one eight. You can email me at audra1@cityofavalon.com, or you can just always drop by City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yolanda Montano, honorable mayor and councilman. Can you hear me? Is it off? I'm, okay. I just have a couple of questions and concerns. I wanna know if anybody knows anything about the takeover for Avalon Freight Services on April first, because we're about sixteen days away from that date. And according to Catalina Freight Services, as of Friday, when I spoke with the manager over on the other side, he said they're done at the end of the month, and he has no idea what's going on. And at this time, it's cash and carry for all businesses, and I have not been contacted by Avalon Freight Services letting us know at the Hotel Medripole where we're supposed to drop off our freight, who I'm supposed to pay, where the billing's supposed to go. And I've been here during all the meetings, and they assured us that it was gonna be a smooth transition, and it was gonna be seamless, and they were gonna take care of our community. That is our bloodline. I deliver freight there every day for the Hotel Medripole. I am currently delivering all our laundry off the island because we have no water, and that goes about twice a week. And it return, it's a, two times a week over and back. And we're coming into our spring break season, and all my supplies, cleaning supplies, amenities, everything comes on that freight service. And do you guys know anything on what's going on? Because I'm getting a little frightened here, since I haven't been contacted from Avalon Freight Service to let us know what the status is.
I know that Avalon Freight Service was putting out information this week in the paper. I know that they have reached out to some businesses, I don't know which ones, and I know that if you, I could give you a number to call, Yoli, if you have specific questions.
That would be great. Nobody up there knows?
Well, I've reached out, obviously, for all of my businesses, and there is, from what I understand, the big marketing splash will happen in this week's papers. I will explain the address, where to go, where to drop it off. I don't have a particular phone number.
Okay, so who do we, who do you reach out to? Do you have somebody that you know?
I reach out to Greg Bombard.
Oh, okay.
But I, I'm not comfortable giving his phone number out, but, but-
Well, maybe you can get some information for the community.
It's gonna be in the paper.
Oh, okay.
And let me also just suggest that once we have the, that information, we'll put it on the website. City's website, I think, would be an appropriate thing for the city to do.
Well, if you guys can follow up or something, because I haven't, I mean, I'm, I'm surprised they haven't reached out to us, because we're a pretty big account. And so, it's important that you guys help this, our community, because we need food and we need, you know, we need our supplies. And I'm just surprised nobody, they haven't reached out to you guys since you guys were part of the, some of you were part of the RFP process and the selective process, but thank you.
Nobody's reached out to me, but understand your concern, for sure.
And I, I can bet my bottom dollar that Jim Luke Johann will put all of that information on.
We have-
Yeah. You are, you are Johnny on the spot when it comes to that. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. During this public comment, I'd like to address two issues that are not on the agenda, and I'd also like to enter some information into the public record. On February twenty-fifth, the California Public Utilities Commission voted unanimously in open, in favor of open competition, and reiterated our concerns regarding the monopolistic control of a public utility service. Commissioner Mike Florio stated he wanted to, and I quote, "indicate my strong distaste for the way the Santa Catalina Island Company is handling this docking situation." He went on to say, "What I see here is unchecked monopoly power being executed," I'm sorry, "being exercised by PSICO to prevent any competition with what is essentially an affiliate company, AFS." He concluded that the common ownership facility would, and I quote, "create an economic hammerlock on the economy of Catalina Island." The PUC strongly encouraged open competition in freight services in Catalina Island, and also encouraged the island company to negotiate with all CPNC holders. Immediately following the CPUC's ruling in favor of open competition, we renewed our request to the island company for open access to the essential freight facilities at Pebley Beach, under equal terms as all other CPUC providers. The island company has disregarded our request. The island company is moving forward with their lease to AFS, which includes a profit-sharing requirement and exclusivity provision guaranteeing that they will not lease space to anyone for use competitive with AFS. It was also discovered on March third, 2016, that a bill was introduced into the California State Assembly's Utility and Commerce Committee, which in part reads, "This bill will repeal the stated authority of a whorfenger and a warehouseman to condemn property." This bill would remove the ability of a certified CPUC maritime freight utility to condemn property at Pebley Beach. We find the timing of this bill to be extremely disturbing. One week after the CPUC decision in favor of open competition, a bill was introduced that would leave Curtin Maritime and other CPUC holders virtually powerless as a public utility on this island. The bill will only affect Catalina Island, as this is the only regulated maritime PUC in California. We're monitoring the progress of this bill, and we will challenge the bill as it moves forward. Curtin Maritime will continue to contact the island company for space at equal terms at Pebley Beach, and will keep the city of Avalon updated on its progress. In closing, I would like to reiterate my resolve to bring competitive freight services to Catalina Island. My determination to open freight services in this market has only strengthened in the last three years. I continue to question the island company's strong resolution to maintain a monopoly, even after the CPUC has found multiple providers to be beneficial to the public. I'll be entering into the record our latest request letter to PSICO regarding open and equal access. California State Lands Commission Staff Report, item ninety-eight, June twenty-ninth, 2015. State Lands Commission Executed Lease, March ninth, 2016. California Public Utility Commission Meeting Transcript, February twenty-fifth, 2016. Assembly Bill Twenty-nine oh three, introduced by the Committee on Utilities and Commerce, March third, 2016. I invite everyone to look at these documents and make their decisions for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three seconds to spare.
Thank you, Martin.
David Hart, City of Avalon's Recreation Department. It's spring. Spring sessions for Kick It Up Dance starts on March twenty-third, next Wednesday, ending with the recital on May fourteenth. You can sign up now, boys and girls, here at City Hall at the Recreation Department. Talking ages three, three to sixteen years of age. This year, we have partnered with CIVR, CIRE, as well as SEICO, CI, and CIRS for the Community Easter Egg Hunt. It will be held Sunday, March twenty-seventh, on the lawn at Descanso Beach. Twelve PM for kids zero to five years of age, and one PM for kids six to twelve years of age. There'll be over four thousand eggs to be found, as well as pictures to be had with the Easter Bunny. With the arrival of spring forward comes Spring Fest, the Fun Community Block Party on Front Street. Boots are available now at fifty dollars for the profit, thirty-five dollars for nonprofit organizations. So, we ask you to come join us, eat, drink, play, socialize on our Community Block Party, the Spring Fest, on Thursday, April twenty-first. Yesterday, I, David Hart, gave a seminar on women's self-defense to the Women's Forum. I taught the class of junior and senior ladies who will be graduating Avalon High School and going off to college on how to be ready, aware, prepared, and to escape an attack either by a domestic abuser or by a rape assailant. I just wanted to be able to share with everyone, if you have been a victim of either some sort of domestic abuse or sexual assault, to please do not remain silent. of either some sort of domestic abuse or sexual assault, to please do not remain silent. Also often, sixty-eight percent of reports do not, sixty-eight percent of attacks do not get reported. Too many people are being let off. Please, if it has happened to you, please, please do not remain silent and either contact your local police department, or you can contact the National Sexual Assault Hotline at 1-800-656-HOPE. Or if you need more information, you can go to raин.org. That's R-A-I-I-N dot org for more information. Remember, first defense is awareness and education. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Allison Osinski, 356 Sumner. Mike got out of here without discussing one of the issues he said he was going to discuss, which was the status of the personal D-SOL units and residences. I'd like to know if anybody's done anything about that since we were promised an answer on March 31st of last year.
There is no easy answer, Allison, just so you know on that. We are meeting with Edison and with BB&amp;K, our lawyer that's been helping us through this process. It's just not as easy as coming up with an application. And we're hoping to have that meeting at the end of this month.
Okay, thank you.
We're trying to get all parties together before we can report out.
Okay, second issue is, what's the status of the boater survey that was discussed about a month ago at the meeting? Particularly relating to issues like shoreboat services? And anything about the purchase of dock carts? Not yet?
No.
Okay. All right. And three years ago next month, Santa Catalina Island Company, at a meeting at the, over at the Country Club, promised 2.2 acres of land for, at Field of Dreams, for construction of the Community Pool and Rec Center complex. They've stalled us for three years, and I'm just wondering, again, has there been anything done in the past month or so? Any discussions between the city and the island company about the transfer of that land to the city? So we can, one of these days, get started on this community rec center and pool project? Has there been any movement at all? And if they're withdrawing it, will they make an announcement that they've withdrawn their offer?
I've had a conversation, and I've heard just the opposite. I mean, they want that land, I think, for some, to build some houses over there, I think. I mean, they're gonna, we have to relinquish what we have over there. I think the horseshoe area and the skate park would probably be moved, I would hope, to another location. But from what I've heard, they're gonna do something else in there.
Well, we've heard that too, but when we ask, they say no, they have not withdrawn that offer. So, you know, we're getting mixed signals here. You know, if it's absolutely off the table, we'd like them to make, since they made a public announcement donating it, we'd like them to make a public announcement taking it back. And if that is the case, then we'll have to look for something else. But if it still is a possibility, we'd like to know that.
Well, I'm sure they've heard you.
Good.
And so if they care to respond in public, they will. But there's nothing we can do to make them respond.
But there hasn't been any discussions recently about this issue?
Similar to Joe.
Similar? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Okay, that's all for oral communication. Okay. We have kind of two agendas here. One with one item and one with a bunch. And the one with one item is to talk about a potential letter to the State Lands Commission. Because two of the members of the council are not able to vote on that, we're going to continue with the regular agenda and then deal with this last. I hope that's not creating too big of a hardship. Okay, consent calendar.
There are eleven items on the consent calendar this evening. The first item is actions, and I'm modifying that one. It is only the actions from the March 1st, 2016 meeting. Number two is expenditures submitted for approval with a total amount of $2,092,214.12. And that includes warrants, electronic fund transfers, and two payrolls. Item three is the Yellow Jacket Control Contract Extension for just one year. I want it noted that next year, we would be going out for an RFP on that. Recommended action is to approve that one additional year. Number four is the restroom cleaning contract extension. Once more, it's just for one year, and we'd be going out for an RFP next year. Recommended action is to approve that one-year extension. I want to make sure you saw the letter I gave to each one of you from the contractors. Number five is declare excess old equipment and vehicles as surplus. And the Public Works Department has come up in the mechanics with a list of equipment that's up there. So recommended action is to adopt the resolution declaring the equipment that is listed on the resolution.
Wait, did you just want to ask a question?
The equipment that we're getting rid of or disposing. Did we, I know this might be a moot point. The Catalina Freight, did we look in anything out there, or maybe Dennis knows, about maybe if they had anything that we could possibly purchase that the city may have needed, like a forklift or something like that? Did we look into that at all?
Not to my knowledge, we did not, Richard.
Okay. I was just wondering if they, you know...
I could certainly reach out, but I don't know if that stuff's been bought to by the other freight service.
That was just across my mind when we were talking about getting stuff.
We'll reach out to them.
Okay, no worries.
Number six is the waterside permit modification application from Paracel Catalina. And I believe the questions that Councilmember Cassidy had should have been addressed in the staff report. And so the recommended action is that the city council make the affirmative finding that the conditions set forth in the municipal code have been met. And that you grant that, I'm sorry. If the modification is granted, Paracel Catalina not interfere with the cross-channel carriers or the cruise ship tendering service, and also require that Paracel Catalina to communicate their vessel movements and intentions with other users at the Cabrillo Mole floats on the VHF radio channel 13. Number seven is the contract extension for Catalina Transportation Services. And recommended action is to authorize staff to extend the contract with CTS for an additional 60 days. And that is under the same terms that exist now. Number eight is the compensation and benefits for management and exempting other unrepresented employees. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution for that. And I know that there were some questions from the Avalon Municipal Employees Association. I did meet with City Hall AMEA members today. Hopefully, they sent that information on. And so if anybody, any of those members contacted the city council, we addressed longevity. This is all old MOU stuff. And going forward, anything new that will take place will be negotiated and then brought forward to the city council.
Can I just make a quick comment on that? I also was very confused about that because it appeared as though, you know, we were going to be looking at a new one. It was on last meeting's agenda, or the meeting before's agenda, then it was pulled, then it was brought back. So I didn't read it on the last one because it was pulled. So it was just a little bit confusing. And maybe it might not work to do all the MOUs at one time down the road when we do them again. But I think that's where it created a little bit of confusion also, is that this one came later. But I understand now that some of the management MOU information happens after the other labor negotiations are done. So that was some of my confusion as well.
And I did want to also point it out that management employees had not received the compensation study increase at the same time that the other employees, they have not received that yet. Number nine is the mooring exchange, and that is to authorize the interim city manager to trade a 40-foot mooring, which is number 167, and a 30-foot mooring, number A, for a 50-foot city-owned lease mooring. And also, if the city manager is unable to negotiate the 40- and 30-foot mooring trade for the city's owned 50-foot mooring, authorize the city manager to trade a 40-foot city leased mooring being held to relocate the leasing number, mooring number 201 for mooring 167. Now, if you could read all that, it made more sense. And Brian is in the audience, I believe, yes, to answer any further questions. Number 10 is a vehicle use policy, P3, and recommended action is to adopt that resolution. A lot of that stuff in our vehicle, in this vehicle policy is what was in our MOUs for the three unions. Number 11 is employ the services of geotechnical services for the fuel dock project. And recommended action is to authorize the interim city manager to execute an agreement with Associated Soils Engineering, Inc., to perform their requisite services on an as-needed basis for the Public Works Capital Improvement Department during the ongoing construction of the new fuel dock project. Additionally, authorize the city manager to execute a one-year contract for an as-needed consultation if other city projects require such services.
Okay, that's the consent calendar.
I'm happy to, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'll pull number nine, please.
And I'd like to pull six and 11.
Eight and seven, I'd like to maybe just talk about seven.
I'm sorry, Richard, which one?
Number seven.
Six. Okay, we're going, we're pulling six. We're pulling six, we're pulling seven, we're pulling...
Nine.
Six and seven.
Nine and 11.
Nine and 11. Okay, item number, so let's move on the others. Is there emotion? Can you remember what you're good with?
Move staff to one, on one to five, eight, 10, and 12.
No.
Twelve.
No, 11, 11, yeah.
No, we're pulling 11.
Eight and 10.
Eight and 10.
I second all these motions from staff.
Does anybody want to comment on those? Okay, let's, and we had a second. Okay, call for the vote.
All ayes?
Okay, item number six.
Six, seven, did we say nine and 11?
Yes.
So for those in the audience that are, that were for those consent calendar items, the Yellow Jacket got approved, the restroom cleaning got approved, the surplus vehicles got approved, the contract extension for Catalina Services got approved. No, no, we're not, sorry. So if you're here for those items, it's over. You can go home. You got what you asked for, right?
But if you just want to stay and get involved, we'd like that too. Okay. Item number six, thank you, that was very nice. This is waterside permit modification application, Cindy.
Oh, you want me to go? I can go.
You wanted to pull.
Yes, I brought up several concerns at the last meeting regarding, the request on this is to add a third vessel to the applicant's waterside permit. And some of the concerns I brought up at the last meeting were that the applicant had been consistently late in making its payments to the city on a couple different occasions. Made the payments forcefully by having their waterside permit potentially coming up for revocation. And those payments being made moments before, day before the meeting in order to have that pulled from the agenda. There's just been a lot of concern over the last couple of years regarding following the rules, excessive amounts of time, being on float five. And so, you know, I personally am having a very difficult time trying to award this additional vessel when, to me, it comes across as rewarding bad behavior. That, you know, we've taken a good look at some of these waterside permits with our, with our members in the community, and we've taken a pretty hard line as far as, you know, we want people to follow the rules, we want them to be good stewards of the permits that they have. And I'm just really struggling with this one because I just haven't seen that. So I'm just not in favor.
And Brian, why don't you come forward? First of all, I think you're making some pretty intense comments about their performance. So we delayed this for six weeks so that you could get information. You wanted five years of their payment history. Did you see the five years of payment history?
Yeah, it's in here, and the first full year that, almost the first full year they had their permit, they were, you know, they were late. And it isn't a couple days late, it's significant, it's six months. It's all the way through the busy season, even not paying on time. And again, I mean, we've spent considerable amount of staff time preparing staff reports and bringing it to the council for potential revocation, and then the applicant will pay the bills. There's also...
When has it come up for revocation? Has that happened?
No, the only time is at time of renewal, when the owner was notified that it was, there were some missing payments, and the payments were made before the renewal took place. So, I mean, it didn't get to council saying revoke the permit. You know, it was, the permittee was told, bring it current, or there's a possibility that council will not renew.
Oh, so there was just that little threat. Okay. Well, and then, and you spoke last time with regard to people hanging out on the docks a little longer, and you put the onus back on you saying, well, if you had to, you know, it's winter time. You seemed to answer that, that it didn't seem to be a problem to you, for you.
It is, and we've spoke about it. And, you know, there's all sorts of finger pointing, saying, well, they do it, so, you know, we're going to do it. So that's where the onus came back on me, saying we have to enforce the rule. So it's fair across the board where everybody plays by the same rules.
You don't document that on your reports when you go and investigate something like that?
Investigate that.
When somebody's, you got a complaint that somebody's been on the dock too long, this company's taken too long, they're not compliant. When you go, when you get a complaint, is that documented in any of your reports?
If we make a note of it in the daily log, we'll put a copy of it in the applicant's waterside permit folder.
So you do have a record of that. Okay.
I mean, I'm not going to say every time, not everybody's going to call it into the office. They'll go by and say, hey, you've got to get off the dock.
It seemed like it would be an enforcement thing, be, if it was documented, and we'd be able to track it better and then have something to go on.
Well, and it wouldn't just be with one company?
No, it'd be with all the companies, not just one company. I mean, it seemed like it'd be an enforcement, yeah.
What's the validity, the validity of some of these complaints? Captain of a parasail vessel forced a competing parasail operator to drop people in the parachute in the water. This can be avoided by not flying near other parasail operations, operators. Does that mean we have too many boats out there?
No, it's a big ocean. If one company would go east and one would go west and not fly within certain areas, you wouldn't have the issue. And when I received this complaint, I talked to the owner of Parasail Catalina, and he talked to his captains and told them to, you know, fly in separate areas. It's a big ocean, there's enough room for all the boats. But it all boils down to the skipper of the boat. And, you know, there's all sorts of allegations of, you know, people trying to put the other competitions person in the water. You know, that's, that's not for me to decide whether they did that or not intentionally. But I know that people ended up in the water, and I made the call and asked them to fly away from the other company.
I think the hard part too is that the, and are you Mr. Kramer? Hi, sorry. But the hard part is not actually being here and overseeing the business. So you're, you know, I don't know if... No, it's not. But, but the rest of my point was that, you know, we can all talk to our employees till we're blue in the face. And we can tell them to follow the rules, we can tell them to, you know, this is how we run our business, this is what we do. But, you know, not being here to oversee it is maybe where some of this has come from. I know that you've had some changes in staff and that it has gotten a lot better since then.
I mean, I understand your concerns with not being here on the island. But if that was the case, everybody had to be here on the island, you know, how would business ever grow? You know, I'm sure all these major companies, you know, they wouldn't be here if they had to be hands-on mom and pop companies. You know, I have great management in place. We respond with Brian to any issues we have. And I'll admit, my bookkeeping skills have a lot to be desired. But I have hired a bookkeeper who will take care of all this. and I'll admit, my bookkeeping skills have a lot to be desired, but I have hired a bookkeeper who will take care of all this. And she's a local, so she'll be here.
The security issue...
I've been doing this, this isn't my first company, I've been in the parasail business almost 40 years now. So, you know, our whole thing is, our first thing is absolutely safety, and we take safety really serious, the second is customer service. So, I mean, in 40 years, almost 40 years, we've never had a serious accident, which should be...
Sounds like there's some pretty dangerous stuff going on out there, I mean, if, if, and, and, there's, there's, there's complaints about the captains not being, like, nice.
And then, who are those complaints from? It's very vague. If Brian brings me anything specific, I will address it immediately, I'll research it, I'll talk to my captains, my crew, my people, and we'll, we'll deal with the situation. But, I mean, some of these, it's what their company said, what our company said, this one was cutting off that one, what the tenders are saying, right, right-of-way issues. I mean, none of it is, we don't, it, it's just something we work with, and we address it. And all my employees are set, I tell every single captain, even if we have right-of-way, you give right-of-way. Like Brian said, the ocean's large, we can go a different direction. You know, we do take safety seriously. So, some of these complaints, maybe they have some justification to them, but we handle it, we deal with it, and we don't have accidents.
You have a manager here on the island that deals with it?
Yes, I do.
Is he one of the boat captains?
Uh, she is not a boat captain, no.
Oh, she's not a boat captain, okay. What about, so, can you sharpen up your bookkeeping skills, like, immediately, so that you, I mean, if you've been doing this for 40 years, you, you should be able to pay your, make your payments on time.
You know what, it's an oversight, and I get penalized for being late. I probably paid, if you, if I do the numbers, at least $4,000 a year in penalties from, for the 10%, it's a lot of money. And it's, you know, it should benefit the city. You get $4,000 more for me being two to three days late.
I kind of like it, personally.
You know, I, I think...
I really can't argue with that.
And then, not just that, if we're really late, then we get the interest added on that. So we are penalized for being late.
Okay, my main concerns were the safety issues, because I know most...
You know what?
Most boat captains are really sticklers when it comes to this.
My bookkeeping sucks. Safety, you cannot question us on, you know, we are solid, we're safe, we have full-time mechanics. In fact, next month, we're bringing a crew from Florida for another training seminar, four days of training for my captain and crew. There's not too many companies that do that.
How many parasail boats are we going to have now?
We'll have six.
About six, so there's, you have three, and there's somebody else has a...
Yeah, and I operate in Newport and Catalina, or Newport and Lake Tahoe also. That's why I'm not here, I don't live here, I have other businesses in other places. And the congestion issue, if you start thinking there's a congestion issue, go to Destin, Florida, where they have 20 to 25 boats flying at any one time. And my competition out here, I can't take anything away from them, they are a solid company, great safety, great captains, just like we are.
So then the need for the third boat is to service the two days a week for the cruise ship?
It's not just two days a week, I know that's the direction it's going to go, it's just a limited two days, but if I'm going to bring a $200,000 asset out here, there is other days that we can use it, and our boats are running at max capacity, and it's really hard on them. So if we can alleviate some of that by splitting it over three boats, that's what we want to do.
Kind of nice to have a backup boat, anyway.
Yes, it is.
And again, this was recommended by the harbor master, so I don't have any problem with this at all.
I got some concerns, but, you know what, I don't, what?
Which concerns?
I just mentioned all of them.
Oh, okay, I, I thought I addressed them, I'm sorry.
Well, you addressed them, but I haven't seen that they were fixed, I mean, I want to make sure that these are fixed going into the future, I mean, I don't want to start playing games with, with boats out there and people, and people's safety, and, and the Catalina Express was mentioned in here, that you, you guys were coming in too close behind them, I mean, this is not a game out here, so...
I, I understand that, it's my livelihood, this has been my whole life, since I was a teenager. So if it supports my family, I'm not going to take any chances with it, I'm not going to jeopardize any safety of any of my customers for anything.
It's the customers, and it's the general public.
And safety, yeah.
You know, as well, so it's our customers, too, not just, you know...
Probably a great thing, if you ever have a chance, come on out and watch us, when we have the training going on, see how intense we are about training.
Okay, well, let's just, let's just get all these complaints off of here, get the late payments off.
The late payments are taken care of, they've been taken care of. Any of the complaints have been resolved also. I work with Brian constantly, he has my cellphone number, he has my email, and whenever there's a complaint, I immediately address it.
Or your manager.
I address it.
You address it.
Sometimes, if my boat's having an issue, I'll know about it before my manager, every captain has my cellphone, when they call, I answer it within one ring. I'm not an absentee owner, as you might think.
No, I don't think you are, and I didn't imply that.
I, okay, I understand, but safety-wise, we're a top company, you can ask anybody in the industry anything about my company.
Would you back that statement, Brian?
I don't have any contact with anybody else in the industry, but there have been issues that I had concerns with and called him, and he did take care of it.
Okay.
But, I mean, when you're leading, when you should be leading people down to your boat, and people sneak out of line from who they were coming down with your passengers, and get on the Catalina Express and start heading for Dana Point instead of the, uh...
Cruise ship.
Cruise ship tender, that's a huge safety issue, so...
Security.
Wow.
And security.
Safety and security.
I look at, Brian, when that happened, how quickly did we respond to that issue?
It happened the next week, it happened twice.
And then, when did you notify me of it?
This was in 2014, so, I mean, it's, it's passed, but...
In sense, we have resolved that issue 100%.
Well, and, and that absolutely speaks to what I mentioned, which was you'd had some, uh, some concern of employment or employees previously that you have since worked out, that you have a different...
And that's not to say hiring new employees, I'm not going to have issues. Every company, as you know, has issues with their employees, and the main thing is how quickly they address the problems. And we address it immediately and resolve the issues.
Could I just ask also, what is the, um, what is the minimum, oh, how do I say this, what is the minimum distance from shore that you should be flying?
It depends on winds. We have a regulation with the harbor, we have to stay out a certain distance, but, you know, if we have winds blowing onshore, we have to stay further out, you know, just in case we have a mechanical issue so that people don't end up on shore.
What is that minimum?
You know, I don't have it off the top of my head, it's, it's listed in your regulations, I believe. I know in Lake Tahoe, it's 1,000 feet beyond the buoy line, that's where I started, so I have that programmed in my head.
I'm sure captains know that, right, though?
Uh, they absolutely know that. These are professional captains, they go through all the captain training that the ferry guys go through, everybody, this isn't, these captains are the same qualified captains as people drive, you know, and tankers.
How many more parasail boats do you think will be able to safely operate around here?
A lot.
A lot?
Yeah.
That's scary.
If the public demands it, and you're a tourist-based economy, and your tourists want it, it shouldn't be scary as long as it's done safely, you should...
Well, we don't want to be Florida, and, and, and we don't want to have more of these close encounters as well.
Yeah, these close encounters are, we, we take care of the close encounters, we, it, it happens, some, you know, boats are crossing in winds and everything, but as long as all the captains are good captains, and they make preventative moves, there's not a safety issue.
Are the captains talking to each other, are the different, are the captains of the different companies talking to each other?
It, some do and some don't, and it goes both ways. You know, we don't want to have a rivalry, rivalry with anybody, we want everybody friends and communicate, and, you know, sometimes there is a competitive edge to it, but we don't like, I don't like it, you know, I like them to communicate amongst each other. Safety, though, I mean, if you really want to go down the safety road, and, what was it? There's an organization out there now that has, has written the rules for parasail safety, and I don't know, is anybody familiar with, what is it?
I don't, I don't know the name, I've, I've seen it, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's WSIA.
WS, yes.
Which has been taken over by the ASTM for standards. And back in '09, it was myself and four other people who started it. So safety does mean something to me. You know, I spent weeks in Florida trying to write the rules for parasailing, which is the standard now, the Coast Guard's adopting this standard.
I'm not going to torture you anymore here, so I'm just going to make a couple quick comments, and then I'm, I'm going to be, turn it over to anybody else who wants to speak, I know we have a member of the audience who maybe wants to say something, and then... So my request to you would be, one, you've already addressed, um, please make all your payments on time so we don't ever have to have this conversation again. Second to that, would you please reiterate to your staff that there is a time limit on float five that does impact not only, you know, them, but it also just the recreational boaters, the skiffs in the summertime that want to go and offload and pick up guests that are arriving on the express. So there's a maximum timeframe on the boat, and then also, um, that there is that thousand-foot, uh, moment from shore, so...
I, well, I'll address with Brian, they have a regulation that states where we take off from, so I, I think it's out...
Well, we have a ton of swimmers out at Pebly Beach, we've, paddle boarding has become hugely popular over here, and, you know, with, without...
I agree.
You know, I'm just saying, these are, these are requests, I just want them on record, if you could have a conversation with your staff, um, I, I certainly would, you know, I'll give you the opportunity to move forward.
Cindy, I'm sorry, could, did, was that four or three of them?
Okay.
Have, have the conversation with your staff was...
Okay, counsel?
Annie, I think there's a...
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to come in?
Joe Caliva, Catalina Classic Cruises, um, what seems to be on the table is, is whether there's to be a third boat. Just out of curiosity, number one, has congestion been taken into consideration? And number two, is it at all counterproductive to what is happening on item nine? So just utilizing float five on both sides, so...
Harbor master, Brad?
It has been, uh, considered, and if everybody gets in and loads and unloads in their 10-minute timeframe, and they are too, uh, not interfere with cross-channel carrier cruise ship operations as one of their conditions, we don't have a problem.
Okay.
Brian, I have this handy as well, if you want to talk to Joe about, I have that.
We also had three permits up until a couple of years ago, when we gave it up before we got our cruise ship contract. So there has been, it's six boat permits out there at any one time.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay, all right. Well, nobody's talking, I'll, I'll, uh, make a motion to recommend the action. One, two, and three, staff recommendations, well, it says it differently. So recommendations one, two, and three. Is there other comment? Is there a second?
I'll second.
They moved in second, a call for the vote. Item number, oh, I'm sorry.
Four eyes, Marshall Cassidy Hernandez Olson, and one no, Sampson.
Okay. Item number seven.
Number seven, I was just, that would be me, so anyway, I was just looking right here on the $1,000 expenditure that we're going to give to the, to the Catalina Transportation, is there something, are the trolleys been? Is that?
Well, I'll, I'll start, and then, if you have more questions, um, Connie can answer them for you.
You probably can.
One of the concerns, we, uh, we had a meeting, Karen and Connie and...
Okay, can we have it quiet in the back, please? Take your discussions outside, please.
There's your seal, there's your parasail, right there.
You can't hear.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Um, we, uh, Karen and Connie, and Denise and I had a meeting, and one of the, the concerns that Catalina Transportation had, rightfully so, is that the trolleys really are beyond their useful life. Um, I do know that the CHP inspection, terminal inspection happened this month, which is something that happens annually, I believe, and, um, basically what the, the inspector said is that they're tired, and so what, they asked for a $1,000 cap on repairs beyond normal maintenance because the contract is going to end, and they, you know, if a transmission fails while they're operating an extra two months, rightfully so, they don't want to be stuck replacing that.
Then we're putting these out to pasture, correct?
We are putting them out to pasture, we are going to hopefully add them to the list of surplus vehicles.
Yeah, we just, all right, I was, I was just thinking, if it happens, then we can do it, but a thousand, that's fine, I'm, I'm good with a thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, that was what they were comfortable with, and...
We're putting it out to pasture, if nothing happens, do we get our $1,000 back? No.
Well, they're paying the $1,000, right.
It's only up to, and they actually have to have the repairs.
Correct, I know, I was just kidding. Okay, good, thank you.
Counsel?
Approve, make a motion to approve.
Item number seven.
I'll second.
Okay, move to second?
Item number seven, please.
Any other comments?
All eyes.
Item number nine.
Annie, I think it, Syria, Syria's cleaning, we've already passed that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nine, we did? I thought somebody pulled nine.
No, that's not the cleaning, I just knew that they were still sitting in the audience, so I didn't think they realized that we'd already, uh, passed there.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, no, that's okay, she was, she was looking confused that we'd gone past that item, so...
Thank you for catching that.
I know, I know you did.
She hasn't seen it loud enough.
Okay, item, item number nine, mooring exchange?
Ever since the Catalina Classic Cruises has been tendering the cruise ship, we've had on the top of our list of being able to access both sides of float number five. Last winter, we dropped a couple moorings to, for, I don't know, three or four months to try and see if that, uh, worked, and it did. So we've had it on our list to be able to do when the opportunity presents itself. Unfortunately, a long time, uh, mooring leasing has passed, and that mooring has come back to the city, which gives us the opportunity to move the moorings that are over in that corner, allowing Catalina Express and Catalina Classic Cruises the opportunity to use both sides of float number five. So, the mooring owner of 167, which is right off the end of float five, also owns a 30-foot mooring, letter A, next to the tuna club. Both of them have been for sale for about three years. I approached him to see if he would be able to entertain the idea of trading both his 30-foot and his 40-foot mooring for the 50-foot mooring that just became available when one of the leases passed. He said that he would entertain the opportunity, but wasn't sure yet whether or not that's what he wanted to do. And we have another mooring number 201, which is off the end of float four, that blocks the access to the, the path to float five. That needs to be relocated, and I'm holding a 40-foot city lease mooring that came up this last year for that relocation. So we have two opportunities, uh, to trade those moorings and make room for more, uh, cross-channel carrier traffic at the moor. So I'm asking for, uh, the city manager to have authorization to, uh, negotiate the trade and come up with either one of the options of trading the 30- and the 40-footer for a 50, or just trading a 40-footer straight across for the 40. And I like the idea of trading the 30- and the 40, because that allows us another 30-foot mooring to have for the city lease waitlist, which is 30 years long.
Wow, okay. Is it from the community?
Is this about moorings, or is this, I mean, really, is this about the mooring, it's themselves, or is it about the Catalina, um...
About the cross-channel carriers.
About the cross-channel carriers, or the, um, the cruise tenders, it's not about the cruise ship tenders, or, is it?
It is, that and Catalina Express, allowing them access to both sides of float number five to be able to unload passengers. So, right now... So, right now, we can only use one side of it with the larger boats. If we were to drop those two moorings like we did last winter to prove, we can get a second boat in on the shore side, and Carnival has asked for it, Catalina Classic Cruises has asked for it, so they won't have to wait off and wait for one of the boats to pull out, so they can go in, they can basically be loading two boats at one time.
Okay, so are they gonna, so we're gonna make up for this loss in the mooring fees by charging more to, to, for cruise ship passengers to board?
Right now, cruise ship passengers by city resolution and by the municipal code charges the cruise ship passengers $2.50 cents per passenger, based on eighty percent of the manifest. I'm working with the city manager to bring a proposal forward to the council to raise those fees.
To, to how much?
That's something that we'll discuss at another time.
Because if we pull two moorings out, we're gonna have, we're gonna have less revenue coming in from the harbor department, correct?
We're gonna, we're gonna lose about $7,392 a year, based on using those moorings from the first part of June to the middle of, I believe it said, September.
So, if we use both sides of float five for the cruise ship tenders and the Catalina Express, isn't that gonna cramp the style because we're approving so many new businesses in the harbor? I mean, a lot of those guys wanna use those, one side of those dock, that dock, right?
But they're, they're not always going to be there, and as the ship's on it, the tender's on its way out to the ship, or the tender's on its way back in from the ship, the waterside permit holders can go in, offload their passengers, and be on their way.
Okay, so, how, how much were we thinking about raising the, the rates of, of the cruise ship passengers coming to shore?
I think that's for a later discussion, that will be, the proposal's being brought to you at a later time, but it's significant enough to more than cover those revenues.
Yeah, yeah, it should be. I would really like to see how this works out. I'd like to go out there on a patrol boat and be shown exactly how this works and how it would work. I mean, have you, have this, has, has this been done before, you said?
We already did it, yeah, we, we did it, I wanna say it was last, last year, we dropped moorings 201 and 167 in the winter months for like, I wanna say it was probably a month and a half, two months. It's when we rebuilt the ramp on float five, we took float five out of service, and then we took float four out of service. So, when we took float four out of service, we were using both sides of float five. And, I mean, Joe Caliva's in the audience, and maybe we can ask him about the ease of the congestion on the line of the cruise ship passengers that are lining up coming back towards town, if we're able to sneak in and get two boats, get them loaded, and get them
I'd be okay with this if you guys can quiet down that, that... One of your boats has an awfully loud horn on it, and it's just louder than anything else in this entire harbor, and it's just, it's ridiculously loud. I wish you guys could do something about that, but other than that, you know, I think it's a fair exchange. You know which one I'm talking about, right?
Absolutely, I know which one.
Okay. Yeah, well, check it out. There's one of your horns on your boats is just way over the top loud, like obnoxiously loud. So, and if that, so if you, if you're telling us that this is gonna work, I mean, I'd say we go ahead and, and try it, and, and see that it does make commerce more efficient, you know, 'cause that's what we're talking about, is getting people on and off more efficiently. So, everybody makes more money, we make more money. Bless you, dear.
Okay.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve item number nine. Yeah, author, yeah, I don't need to read it, do I?
Nope. Is there a second?
I'll second it, I just had one more question, Brian, easy yes or no. If, if the tendering were to go back to the pier, would, would we reinstall these moorings, or would it just, just be done with it at this point?
I'm not gonna say yes, we'd install them, I'd like to, because that's, gives us two more spots to use, but that would be contention upon other cross-channel carriers, whether they find it beneficial to have both sides of that dock open.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Any other comments from the...
You know what else is, we should probably see if we could have the revenue that, that is gonna be lost by the moorings being gone, maybe somehow made up in the, in the future.
I, I can guarantee you it's substantial, and that proposal will be, be coming before you in, I would, I would say, the next month or two, it's all...
I think we set it up.
Okay, it's only gonna be a month or two, all right, that's fine.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, no further comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I requested to pull this one so that I could ask our interim capital improvements director, if you could give us, please, a status of where we are with the fuel dock right now, the construction, and also where we are budget versus actual, and possible anticipated finish time.
Yes, fuel dock's proceeding. As I reported last time on the update, we had one setback with the asbestos demolition removal. It cost us six weeks, but we're still on schedule now. I don't know if you've noticed, but we sent, we set one bent out of the twelve bends, we set some piers. They're not fully set into the ground, and one of the reasons that we're asking for this additional geotechnical services is for an underwater diver, to make sure that we're solid underground where we can't see. We had thought originally we might not need these services. I know that we have a, not to exceed a price in the staff report, that could be for some other geotechnical services on the island, not just all for the fuel dock. But I think it'd be prudent, these, these people that are providing the diving are, work for the geotechnical firm that did the design of the bottom of the piers and the anchors, and so that's why we thought it'd be prudent. We may have overlooked the need of this at the beginning, and that's why it's coming to you now, but we feel it's very prudent to ensure that we're constructed properly on the ocean floor.
Was that a three-part question?
It was, where, so, obviously, the construction's moving forward, but what is the, are we still on an anticipated finish date before summer?
Yes, ma'am. The way it is now, barring any inclement weather, or rain, or any other unforeseen issues, we're scheduled to be complete by the end of May.
You're talking fuel dock?
Fuel dock, and the two, the, the buildings, the restrooms and the buildings.
And the, and the restaurant, per se?
Restaurant, no.
Okay, yeah.
That's phase two, which is gonna be constructed separately, privately.
Okay.
And then where are we, the overall anticipated cost for the construction project, and do you know how far over budget we are, or...
We're, we're, we're well under budget.
Great.
Yes. You allowed a fifteen percent contingency, when you allowed us to proceed, and we've only used about three percent of that contingency, so far.
Keyword, "so far."
So far, we got our fingers crossed.
Okay.
Yeah. We do have to fortify the existing seawall. That's a change order that's out there, I don't have the cost on that yet.
Okay.
We, we sent the design to the contractor, and I'm waiting for the cost, so...
And that's an additional cost?
That's, but it's, it's all within that contingency.
Okay, great.
I won't be coming back to you for that. This was an unanticipated cost that we probably should've figured at the beginning, that this kind of was overlooked. Okay?
I'm good, thank you.
All right.
Make your pleasure on item eleven?
I'll make a motion to approve item number eleven.
Second.
Moved in second, public comment? Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Okay. Do you mind if we take, go a little break? Just a couple minute, just a couple, sorry, a couple minute break.
Help me out, help me out.
Several capital projects were excluded due to the uncertainty of the city's financial position at, at the end of June. And on November third, the city council amended the budget after staff presented the preliminary ending, ending fund balances as of June twenty fifteen and proposed additional spending utilizing a portion of the prior year excess revenues over expenditures and increasing projected revenues to be a little less conservative. Tonight, we will look at how the city's actual revenues, expenses, and net position for the first six months compare to the budget and prior year. Let's look at revenues first. And before we start, let me explain how to read the tables. To simplify the results, the dollars are presented in millions on the presentation here. And they are the same numbers in the staff report attachment, they are just divided by one million. There are letters above each column to help us during our discussions. Column A is the data for the twelve months of last year. Column B is the original twelve month budget. Column C is the budget as amended last November. Column D is this year's first six months. Column E is the percentage of remaining budget and fifty percent represents half of the budget. And smaller percentages are favorable for the revenues but unfavorable for expenses. For example, the first line visitor generated revenues for the government is forty percent. That means in the first six months, the city has collected more than half of the budgeted revenue and it only needs to collect forty percent more to meet its budget. And that's a good thing. Column F is a projection of the year-end results. Column G is the difference between the projected year-end results and then the amended budget. And then column H is the difference between the projected year-end results compared to last year. Everyone following that so far? So this first table shows the revenue for government activities. These are the basically all activities except for the harbor, the sewer, salt water, and solid waste. The first line visitor generated revenue. In column E, if you look there, you can see that the city only needs to collect forty percent more of the budgeted revenue in the next six months. Visitor generated revenue includes transient occupancy tax, admission tax, and sales tax. The next line, capital grants, this is a budgeted grant for the fuel dock project. And funding will be received later this year as the project progresses. The next line, local transportation fund is a large portion of that is the revenue for a grant for the e-buses. And the remainder of the funding will be received later this year. The desalination reimbursement on the next line, I'm just showing this to show that this is the budgeted reimbursement from the state for the city's contribution for the new disalination plant. With the delays, we're anticipating now that both the, this revenue, the decel reimbursement from the state and the contribution the city will make to Southern California Edison, both will be after this fiscal year. And both of those are for the same amount, the bottom line is no change. Other revenues include property taxes, licenses and permits, charges for services, and other miscellaneous revenues. And then on the bottom line, you see that this year's revenues are conservatively projected to slightly exceed the amended budget. On the next slide are the enterprise fund revenues. Enterprise funds are the harbor, sewer, salt water, and solid waste funds. The enterprise funds are intended to be primarily self-funded by charging for the cost of services received by others. And the harbor visitor generated revenues include harbor use fees and warfage. You can see here also that the city only needs to collect forty percent again to meet the budgeted revenue. The harbor other revenues include mooring permits, harbor transfer fees, rentals, and other miscellaneous revenues. And these are close to fifty percent of the budget right now. The sewer, salt water, and solid waste are collected through the property tax bill. And that's why they're right at fifty percent because they're collected through the property tax. And again, this year's revenues are conservatively projected to slightly exceed the amended budget.
Bob, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I should know this, is the city cash or accrual?
On this, this is cash, so there, there are not accruals. The sewer and the salt water and the solid waste would be accruals.
Hey Bob, if we have some, some upcoming capital improvements that we need to make to our sewer treatment plant, how would we go about trying to put a fund together or some kind of a, put that on the budget? Do, do we first need to bring to you exactly how much it would cost to do that, those improvements? Because what I'm understanding is we need a back, backup centrifuge, we need to protect the centrifuge that we have right now, that is the computer brain to it. And then we also, we're gonna, we're gonna need a new Bobcat out there. So how, how would we go about, you know, projecting, coming up with the money for that?
I'll be speaking with Dennis Jich and the other department heads during this next budget cycle. We'll be looking at the short-term needs, what we need to do in the, in the next year, but also the long-term needs in the next five, ten, and twenty years or longer. And make sure that we have a plan on being able to fund for the needed projects. And that's what we'll be doing as part of the next budget cycle.
Okay, thank you.
I've moved on to the next slide for expenditures. For the expenditures, remember that column E, a higher percentage now for the expenditures means a larger portion, portion of the budget has not been spent. And you can see that the desalination plant contribution is unspent in the middle of the table there. And then Public Works has a high percentage remaining because significant, significant element of that budget is for the fuel dock project and it was just getting underway in December. Excluding the fuel dock and the desalination plant, the remaining governmental expenditures are right in line at about fifty percent of the budget. And the projected year-end governmental expenditures are within three percent of the budget. Next are the expenses for the enterprise funds. The harbor expenditures are slightly better than budget at fifty-four percent remaining. The expenditures for the other three funds are lower than budgeted because projects were added to the budget in November on the amended budget and will commence later this year. And if some of these projects are not completed before the end of the year, staff will, will present those projects to the city council and request funds to be carried over into the next fiscal year. Now that we've looked at the revenues and expenditures, let's look at the net change in financial position, also known in the private industry as the net profit or earnings. But the city is a nonprofit government entity and profit for the city means an excess of net revenues over expenditures. And that can be set aside for reserves for long-term goals and capital projects. A loss in the private industry for the government means a deficit that must be funded out of reserves or from another fund. All of the funds are projected to be in line with the amended budget by the end of the year. And the deficit of eight hundred thousand dollars in the sewer fund and the five hundred thousand dollars in the salt water fund will be subsidized by the general fund as budgeted. But next month, staff will be proposing scenarios to the council to consider ways that the subsidies could be reduced. And this last table just shows the overall revenues, expenditures, and the net change in position. And you can see that we're projected to be on target with budget by year-end.
Good job.
For the fiscal impact, the mid-year results demonstrate that the city is on course with the amended budget. The amended budget utilizes a portion of the prior year's excess revenues over expenditures. And the total budgeted revenues are adjusted, were adjusted upwards by one million dollars in line with last year's actual revenues. And as we presented last November, the amended budget projected fund balances to be in the general fund, six point two million at the end of this year. Harbor fund, three million, solid waste, one million. And the sewer and salt water to be subsidized by the general fund. And since we're on track with the amended budget, these balances are still expected. The recommendation is to receive the report for the mid-year financial result comparison for fiscal year fifteen sixteen. There are no amendments proposed at this time, and I'm available for any questions.
Well, that was really concise. It was wonderful and it wasn't the stack that Denise got.
Those were my working papers.
Yeah, that you had to create to get to this, so that was beautiful. Comments from the council and/or the general public?
Great job, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Really, really nice, appreciate it.
Good work. Move to accept.
I'll second.
Further comments, call for the vote?
I, and that's, I'm sorry Denise, that's available, that's available online?
We can put that online.
This, this presentation would be great, thanks.
Item number thirteen.
Okay, number thirteen is the Fourth of July barge expenditure. And staff had reached out to several of the barge companies to get quotes for us. And I want to apologize first because I was, there was a misunderstanding on my part and I was tardy all last week trying to get caught up after my wonderful vacation and then all the meetings, so time I, staff had received an oral quote and I was remiss in telling them I nearly needed that in writing. David did put the quote amount in his fiscal range at the bottom there, that fifteen thousand, and that was the quote we received from Avalon Freight Service. However, that's going to be divided between the island company and us, so it will cost the city of Avalon seven thousand five hundred, so that would be your three quotes.
Okay, council? Well, that beats last year's. By eighteen thousand dollars or something.
Twenty-six, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with a no comment, I'll make a motion or no public comment, I'll make a motion to approve. Uh, I'm sorry, I will make a proper motion here. I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for barge service to be used for the Fourth of July fireworks display with Avalon Freight Services for half of the fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, so that moved in second, other comments? Call for the vote?
Maybe we get more fireworks this week.
All ayes.
Okay, item number fourteen.
Okay, number fourteen is introduction of a new ordinance, well, it's to revise and amend the section six dash two point four oh three of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding construction and demolition debris. And basically what it goes down to is Avalon Environmental is already requiring that out at the landfill. Steve Batty is in the audience, if you have any additional questions, it's all on sorting the CND that comes out there. We have a great relationship with Cow Recycle, they're always very pleased with what we're doing. And I want to point it out that in our contract with CRNR Avalon Environmental that the city attorney, thank you very much, made sure in our contract that we got twenty percent of what we receive out at the landfill and just for kicks, I investigated how much we'd received in the last two years and we received two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Back, so.
So I have a credit, it says, it says the, the charge for which shall be set by resolution of the city council. Have, if I, if I've done it in my little two-year time, have we done that or is that, did we actually do that?
For charges of the CRNR prices?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I believe that's part of the annual, um, ordinance, you know, that big, the big thing that you pass with all the fees.
Okay, thank you.
And if I, if I read this, what it means is you can take it to CRNR or if you want to, you can contract your own stuff to move it off the island? Take care of it all yourself?
But you have to sort it.
Yeah, you have that option, yeah.
And Joanne has everybody trained well out there, they're already sorted. Do you have any questions for Steve?
Just to express my appreciation for the support of the council to obtain this and it will be certainly appreciated by Cow Recycle. We have them visiting in May.
Okay, great, thank you.
They come yearly in May and check on us and they think so far ahead, actually he sends us e-vites like back in November.
Wow.
For dates.
Yeah. Okay.
Motion?
I love a motion.
I move to introduce and waive all further reasons of ordinance of the city of Avalon amending section six dash two point four oh three of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding construction and demolition debris. The ordinance will modify the city's regulation for disposing of construction and demolition debris to require that the residents self-sort CND and/or directly transport the CND to the mainland, mainland disposal. Just one too many words in that sentence. I'll second, it wasn't a bit more.
Okay, moved in second, call for the vote?
All ayes.
Item number fifteen.
Okay, item number fifteen is the Cabrillo Mole Revitalization Plan, expanded scope of services. And I do need to note that on the recommended actions on the staff report, it states five thousand dollars, but it's really five thousand five hundred dollars and that's five thousand for the contract and five hundred dollars to go towards travel, so it was correctly reflected in the fiscal impact, but a typo in the recommended action. And we have Kendall Flint here from RGS to give us a, a report.
Thank you very much, good evening, Mayor Marshall, council members and members of the audience. Again, I'm Kendall Flint with Regional Government Services, I'm really happy to be back in town, it's so nice. And it's not raining here, which is very lovely. I just wanted to go over with you briefly, kind of the cause and effect of, of the program that we ran thus far. As you know, RGS was contracted by the city to basically develop an outreach program that would establish some overall goals for council consideration in terms of the revitalization of the mole. That would include, of course, identifying the types of amenities and/or services and uses that the public would like to see as well as some of the businesses that are here on island, such as Catalina Island Company, Catalina Express, and others. We did a very comprehensive outreach in the fall and the idea was to take all of that information and come back to council with a progress report and say, here's all the things we found. We were extremely successful in that. In the first round that we went through, we actually had a hundred and, one thousand two hundred and seventy-five people participate in our online survey. I know many of you attended several of the workshops that we did, one of them was here at City, City Hall. We did one for the Kiwanis, I'm sorry, one for the Rotary, one for Lions Club. And then we also had a series of meetings. In fact, I found myself being rather popular for a couple of weeks on island where we were just, you know, getting, which was great, I enjoyed doing it. But speaking with local business people and speaking with, of course, representatives from local tour operators and whatnot. We also worked very closely with news media, there was a news release that was put out. And of course, we also worked very closely with both the Chamber of Commerce and Catalina Island Vacation Rentals to have a series of e-blasts went out. So they were both using their entire databases to send out to anyone who's actually visited the island in the last six to ten years and rented properties so we could engage them in the process. In the fall, we also, of course, launched our website, I mentioned that earlier, we've had more than seventy comments come in via that website. We've been able to, of course, do intercept interviews. One of the concerns we had is when we started, it was actually in the September, October timeframe. And obviously, the types or the, the volume of visitor traffic that comes here is very different in the winter than it is in the fall, although it sounds like you've had a really good couple of months so far. Over a period of time during the Jazz Tracks Festival, we conducted two hundred intercept interviews. So we were basically riding on the ferries, going back and forth between the mainland and talking with people about their experiences coming to and from. And I mentioned previously the Rotary Club, Lions Club, Chamber. At the time, one of the things we noticed is we have a very high Hispanic population here in Avalon and the then-city manager requested that we actually put together a second, or I'm sorry, a third type of workshop that would be specific for Spanish speakers. So we created a complete program, we translated all the information, brought in native speakers, and conducted a out-of-scope workshop at his request, which was attended by about twenty-five people here on island in cooperation with the local church. You might have seen some of these, I think some of you participated again in the various polling exercises, but all together with the various types of engagement, we've actually had over twenty-two hundred people participate in some way in the outreach process, which was great because it allowed us to really get some very good information from them about the types of things that they would like to see. We do believe that there's some additional items that we need to follow up on. One was getting additional clarification from the cruise line industry because there are differing opinions on island about the appropriateness of different types of solutions, whether those are docks or arms, you're gonna be looking at, I believe, one of those in the coming months. We also want to have a little more time to talk with the folks that are providing tender services, both for the things that we talked about earlier tonight with the parasailing, but also getting people on and off of cruise ships as they're coming in. So in addition to all that outreach, again, we also were meeting, of course, with the ferry companies themselves. The city manager requested that we spend a full day with Catalina Express, we went over and toured their facilities, both at the Catalina Downtown Landing as well as their San Pedro facility to get a look at how they were structuring both the embarkation and de-barkation process. And again, we met with the island company, cruise ships, Chamber of Commerce, the conservancy, and of course, local business owners. The things that are pending for us right now is that when we are all done, we want to be able to have an open house that basically allows the public and those that have participated to find out what we heard and then have them weigh in that one more time before we come back to council with that final report that would make those recommendations. In the course of the overages, which is what's before you tonight, we basically went over about five thousand, it was a little bit more than that, but we're sticking, sticking there with these additional tasks that were requested that time in December. They included, of course, the Catalina Express meetings, the Spanish-language workshop, additional meetings with stakeholders that were over and above what we initially had thought about doing, and then getting a second day in on the intercept interviews. And of course, we had to bring down Sylvia Valle, who was our Spanish speaker, to handle the last workshop. So at this point, we're asking council to move forward to a contract amendment of five thousand and then five hundred, actually just to bring me back for either, I believe, the city manager's thinking a May date as opposed to an April date
the mainland disposal. Too many words in that sentence. I'll second. It wasn't a bit.
Moved in second. Call for the vote?
All ayes?
Item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen is the Cabrillo Mole Revitalization Plan, expanded scope of services. And I do need to note that on the recommended actions on the staff report, it states five thousand dollars, but it's really five thousand five hundred dollars, and that's five thousand for the contract and five hundred dollars to go towards travel. So it was correctly reflected in the fiscal impact, but a typo in the recommended action. And we have Kendall Flint here from RGS to give us a report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Marshall, Councilmembers and members of the audience. Again, I'm Kendall Flint with Regional Government Services. I'm really happy to be back in town. It's so nice, and it's not raining here, which is very lovely. I just wanted to go over with you briefly, kind of the cause and effect of the program that we ran thus far. As you know, RGS was contracted by the city to basically develop an outreach program that would establish some overall goals for council consideration in terms of the revitalization of the mull. That would include, of course, identifying the types of amenities and/or services and uses that the public would like to see, as well as some of the businesses that are here on island, such as Catalina Island Company, Catalina Express, and others. We did a very comprehensive outreach in the fall, and the idea was to take all of that information and come back to council with a progress report and say, here's all the things we found. We were extremely successful in that. In the first round that we went through, we actually had one thousand two hundred and seventy-five people participate in our online survey. I know many of you attended several of the workshops that we did. One of them was here at City Hall. We did one for the Kiwanis, I'm sorry, one for the Rotary, one for Lions Club. And then we also had a series of meetings. In fact, I found myself being rather popular for a couple of weeks on island where we were just, you know, getting, which was great, I enjoyed doing it, but speaking with local businesspeople and speaking with, of course, representatives from local tour operators and whatnot. We also worked very closely with news media. There was a news release that was put out. And of course, we also worked very closely with both the Chamber of Commerce and Catalina Island Vacation Rentals to have a series of e-blasts went out. So they were both using their entire databases to send out to anyone who's actually visited the island in the last six to ten years and rented property so we could engage them in the process. In the fall, we also, of course, launched our website. I mentioned that earlier. We've had more than seventy comments come in via that website. We've been able to, of course, do intercept interviews. One of the concerns we had is when we started, it was actually in the September, October timeframe, and obviously, the types or the volume of visitor traffic that comes here is very different in the winter than it is in the fall, although it sounds like you've had a really good couple of months so far. Over a period of time during the Jazz Tracks Festival, we conducted two hundred intercept interviews. So we were basically riding on the ferries, going back and forth between the mainland and talking with people about their experiences coming to and from. And I mentioned previously the Rotary Club, Lions Club, Chamber. At the time, one of the things we noticed is we have a very high Hispanic population here in Avalon, and the then-city manager requested that we actually put together a second, or I'm sorry, a third type of workshop that would be specific for Spanish speakers. So we created a complete program. We translated all the information, brought in native speakers, and conducted a out-of-scope workshop at his request, which was attended by about twenty-five people here on island in cooperation with the local church. You might have seen some of these. I think some of you participated again in the various polling exercises, but all together with the various types of engagement, we've actually had over twenty-two hundred people participate in some way in the outreach process, which was great because it allowed us to really get some very good information from them about the types of things that they would like to see. We do believe that there's some additional items that we need to follow up on. One was getting additional clarification from the cruise line industry because there are differing opinions on island about the appropriateness of different types of solutions, whether those are docks or arms. You're going to be looking at, I believe, one of those in the coming months. We also want to have a little more time to talk with the folks that are providing tender services, both for the things that we talked about earlier tonight with the parasailing, but also getting people on and off of cruise ships as they're coming in. So in addition to all that outreach, again, we also were meeting, of course, with the ferry companies themselves. The city manager requested that we spend a full day with Catalina Express. We went over and toured their facilities, both at the Catalina Downtown Landing, as well as their San Pedro facility, to get a look at how they were structuring both the embarkation and de-barkation process. And again, we met with the island company, cruise ships, Chamber of Commerce, the Conservancy, and, of course, local business owners. The things that are pending for us right now is that when we are all done, we want to be able to have an open house that basically allows the public and those that have participated to find out what we heard and then have them weigh in that one more time before we come back to council with that final report that would make those recommendations. In the course of the overages, which is what's before you tonight, we basically went over about five thousand. It was a little bit more than that, but we're sticking there with these additional tasks that were requested that time in December. They included, of course, the Catalina Express meetings, the Spanish-language workshop, additional meetings with stakeholders that were over and above what we initially had thought about doing, and then getting a second day in on the intercept interviews. And of course, we had to bring down Sylvia Valley, who was our Spanish speaker, to handle the last workshop. So at this point, we're asking council to move forward to a contract amendment of five thousand and then five hundred, actually, just to bring me back for either, I believe, the city manager's thinking a May date as opposed to an April date based on council commitments and council calendars, but we would wrap it up in that time period. And so with that, I'm available to answer any questions you might have, process or points that we've heard so far.
I have a question. How much more information, because I don't know if you're going to have colored drawings. I don't think we're in any design thing. How much more information than what you just gave us would be there? Because I can't envision or imagine that.
Well, there's a lot that's already done, so to be fair, there's not that much more that needs to be done. However, we did want to spend some time with the harbor master and also spend some time with the folks that are doing the tenders. And the reason for that was because in the course of the outreach, we did have some members of the public ask questions about whether or not the tenders could be moved off of the floats and onto the Green Pier, and we wanted to be able to adequately address that and both have, you know, all the participating companies, as well as the folks that are using it, weigh in. And we haven't been able to have that conversation yet. But the other part of it with the cruise ship industry is that we did read the summary document that was produced, I believe, in 2014, which had a lot of different information in it. We were not able to get Catalina, sorry, Carnival or the major cruise lines to specifically commit to the next steps or the types of things they would need to see. There's been a lot of anecdotal things that we've learned through some conversations, but it would be helpful to be able to have that additional conversation. To be clear, though, that the funds that we're asking for tonight are actually funds that have already been expended at the request of the city manager back in December, so we're not asking for any additional money for additional work. We're going to complete the report. I'm going to complete the additional interviews required, and I'm going to come back and present to you again. We're just trying to cover the costs that at the time the city manager was going to bring forward, and given the circumstances of December and January, that did not happen. So we were coming back to council to see if we could recover.
But again, so you got information like on bathrooms, if people want bathrooms in there, but the scope of the project and any of that, you really don't speak to? You don't speak to solution? You just?
Oh, no, no. We are making some absolute recommendations. Off the top, I can tell you that, you know, we're going to recommend that you actually form a PPP, a public-private partnership, different than a joint powers authority, but more in tune with, say, a memorandum of understanding. The city is constrained by funding that comes from federal or state dollars for transportation, so you can't, you can't form a JP and mix that money. But what you can do is take care of the undercarriage and some of the other issues that relate to the mull, and then in your next phase, when you go to implementation, we believe there's a very strong chance that you're going to have private investment that would come into Avalon and help offset the costs of what might come next. And to give you some examples, one of the things we learned is that there was a pushback among some of the businesses and some stakeholders that they wanted to see less fishing off the mull dock, that they didn't want to see that happening. But it's one of the only places on island or any places around that you can fish without a license, and it's kind of part of the character of Avalon. So we were looking at what are some solutions that you could do around that, and that's simply done as separation, where you could set out actual boundaries that said, these are where people are going to be fishing and enjoying that, and here's where people are going to be getting on and off. We also got quite a bit of information about ingress and egress, both moving baggage and whatnot from the various ferries that service the island, and then finding a solution that gets them from the port where they're leaving the mainland to their hotel here, because right now, there's not quite that connection. It's not quite ready yet. Both Catalina Express and some of the other providers have said their smaller boats probably wouldn't be up for it, but the larger boats could be retrofitted to make that happen. Catalina Express had also said that while they do not want to have a forty-five-minute, you know, here's Catalina on every cruise, that they would be open to, for example, having a five-to-six-minute video at the end that kind of orients people. When you get off the tender, you're going right for this, you're going left for that. If you want to get a bicycle or whatever, these are your touch points to kind of be more educational. So there's actually a tremendous amount of information that we came out of that, and that's the kind of stuff we'll be talking about in the actual report. I would like to say that it's interesting because people who live on islands and people who visit the island have very different views about what the upgrade needs should be for the mull. And to be, I thought it was very interesting when we did the intercepts going back and forth, when people are coming on island, especially those that are visiting for the first time, they don't even see the mall. They see the casino, they see the Green Pier, they see this lovely place, and they're completely enamored. You talk to them a day later when it's warmer, and they're waiting in the sun to go home, and their attitude changes a little bit. They're looking for shade. They're looking for more amenities and more things. So it was a very interesting process, and I think that there's some very exciting things that came out of it in terms of amenities that would be able to happen, I think, or at least for you to consider happening, provided there's additional funding for it. I don't think it's practical for the City of Avalon to pay for the type of infrastructure investment and redoing all this that would be envisioned by some of your partners, but I think there's definitely partners on island that are willing to step up, provided there's a good plan and structure in place to do that.
Great. Thank you. Questions from the audience?
Motion?
Shall I step over and you can sit here for a moment?
Hey, did we ever come up with a logo? We have that, don't we?
Yeah.
You got that?
Yep.
Front slide.
And you can continue to use that for as long as you would like. You could do something else if you choose to, but that's it right there.
That's it there? Yeah.
Yep.
If there are no questions? Okay?
Motion? Move to authorize.
Absolutely.
The amendment to the agreement with Kendall Flint of RGS for expanded scope of services for the Cabrillo Mole Revitalization Plan for five thousand dollars plus five hundred dollars for transportation.
Second act.
Okay, call for the vote?
All ayes?
And we'll see you in May? Is that what we're hoping for?
It's either the end of May or the first meeting in June.
Okay.
Just because of the timing of the election and then if there's new people coming in and all that.
Thanks.
Keep it up.
Thank you, Kendall. I'm glad we didn't have a court reporter here because she couldn't have kept up with her.
I know.
She's good.
Okay, item number sixteen.
Item number sixteen is the process in the event of a tie vote at the April twelfth, two thousand sixteen Avalon Municipal Election. So it is up to this council to determine if we were to have a tie vote, how you want to handle it, if you wanted to conduct a special election. And I believe in the staff report, it just said thirty-five thousand because that's what we budgeted for this election. Or you can determine the tie vote by lot, so to speak. And if that's what the route you decide to go, you would also have to determine if it is for all subsequent elections until the council deems not to, or if it's just for this one election.
What do we do now?
Lot. Lot.
That's what it's been is just by lot.
Rock, paper, scissors.
For one, one election.
Cards. We've done cards before. We've done straws before.
Really?
Remember the card?
Yes, I loved.
We did the cards for bonds.
Oh.
And this isn't just for the City of Avalon that determines this. It's all cities. Have to figure out what they're going to do for the process of a tie vote.
But what was that, the last little part you said, though?
If you decide to do it by lot, that you have to determine if it's just for this municipal election or all subsequent elections until the existing council determines. Let's stop that. So you could determine right now, okay, we're going to, any tie votes from now on and all municipal elections will be decided by lot.
Okay, and then the next council can change it. They can look at it again and change it.
They could.
Okay.
It's usually the council decides, just for this one election.
I like lot, personally.
I like lot, saving thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
So I have a motion and a second.
Move to decide by lot.
And that's where we've been for a while, right?
And for this election or for all future elections?
For this election.
You just went for this one? Really?
Next council can change it.
I just have a question. If, maybe it probably won't, what is the process? Say, there's a change that happens, and one of our, what mayor position comes up.
Yeah, let's say Cindy gets banned.
Cindy's spot gets in, so what determines the next person coming in?
Okay, then what happens is, is that after the election and the new council is sworn, if there's a vacancy in the election caused, in this instance, it would only be caused by Councilmember Cassidy becoming mayor, then her seat would be vacant, and then that council that is sworn can decide who gets to be, who gets to take her place, and it can be done on any grounds whatsoever. You don't have to be, you don't have to run for council. It can be anyone that is an elector of the city can be appointed by the council. Traditionally, it's been done by someone, when you have a vacancy, someone that's been expressed an interest or maybe has run or has a position, but it's up to the council. So, you know, it's up to that council to determine whatever they want to fill the seat, any criteria, as long as the person is, you know, a registered voter in Avalon.
That's on Marie Winington. Go on.
And what happens if there's a tie between the four members?
Between, oh, it's two to two? Okay, so I've had this happen in Lake Arrowhead, and what happens is if you have a two-to-two tie and you have a certain number of days, it's like sixty days to appoint. If you don't appoint within sixty days, then I believe it goes to the board of supervisors, and so Canaby would appoint.
I don't understand the two-to-two.
Okay, and in other words, if you can't agree who's going to, who's going to be the replacement council, eventually, I believe it will go to the board of supervisors after a certain number of days now, or it could go to an election. But when I had it on Lake Arrowhead, it was, they couldn't agree, and then the board of supervisors appointed.
And if there's a tie, you do at least one little recount, just to kind of make sure?
Oh, absolutely.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
That was a good question.
Again, it's completely up to the council's discretion.
So it doesn't have to be a person that ran for council?
No.
Anybody on the street?
Well, not anyone on the street. As long as they're registered voters.
But the council has to decide that.
Right. The new council decides that.
I was just curious.
Okay.
Good question, because I had no idea. I mean, that was the.
Okay, so.
So we have a first and a second, by lot and for this election.
Anybody want to shout about this one? Okay, call for the vote.
All ayes?
Thank you. Now, do we have to actually close this and open the new?
Yes, we do.
Okay, this meeting will be closed?
Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony, yes.
Okay, just passing on.
And now we'd like to call, we'd like to open up this special council meeting for Tuesday, March fifteenth. And I guess we are going to do roll call again? Do we have to do roll call invitation and pledge allegiance?
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Temmelson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. We pledge?
You can skip the pledge if you want.
Thank you, okay. Oral communication, this is an opportunity for people in the public to speak on an item which is non-agendized. You will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken. Consent, Keller, there are none, so general business.
We have one item of discussion, consideration of a letter to the State Lands Commission regarding a ramp located at Pebble Beach Freight Lance Facility. Due to income from the island company, Councilmembers Cassidy and Hernandez will be recusing themselves. This action does directly involve the island company because it is their property.
And we will not be coming back?
No.
No excuse for the night.
Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.
Hello, hi.
Okay. I want to make sure that the council saw the information I gave you, as well as now, when the information that Martin Curtin gave us, I will make copies of it and provide it to you. I have provided you with a letter that the city wrote in April of two thousand fifteen to the State Lands Commission advising them of a lengthy discussion that took place at the city council the night before that they met, and then we sent a letter again in June tenth of two thousand fifteen, just telling that the City of Avalon was in favor of free competition. And then I provided you with the agenda item that went to the State Lands Commission in June, as well as the transcripts.
Okay. I think we need to write a letter to the Lands Commission. And we need to support the use of the ramp at Pebble Beach. As a sublease, sir.
And then I have a, so you opened it, so that's good. I have a question. On March ninth, the State Lands Commission said a certificate, a certificate had still not been given to AFS as of March ninth? I had something on my computer. Of course, it wouldn't print out, but, I mean, whoever is the expert on these certificates of conveyance and necessity, the minute they say, you know, they went with the three people, the three providers, does that mean that everybody now has a certificate in their little hot little hand, or what? Does anybody know when you actually get a certificate?
I don't know that. What I do know, and this is, again, information that was provided by Chris Wilhelm today, was that the State Lands felt that there was sufficient action by the Public Utility Commission to actually execute the lease between the State Lands and the island company.
Yeah, but the only thing I've read publicly is that Martin Curtin, Curtin Maritime was the only one that actually received their CP CN.
All three of them received them. Avalon Freight, Martin and Kellie Freight.
Okay, well, that's not, why are we on this discussion anyway?
Well, I'm just, because I'm just, because I'm a little concerned if April first comes and nobody has their certificate yet, who's going to provide freight service? So that was just a little something.
Well, this is a step forward in that direction, so I think we ought to just stick to what we came here for.
I just had a question. Okay. Would you like to come and speak?
Madam Mayor, council members, good evening. Martin Curtin, Curtin Maritime. Tonight, we are asking the city council to send a letter to the State Lands Commission requesting all CPUC certified providers have equal and open access to the dock in the California tidelands surrounding the Pebble Beach facility. That property belongs to the people of this state and is held in trust for the public by that commission. The California Constitution prohibits a private organization from excluding the right-of-way to such water whenever it is required for any public purpose. During the June twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen meetings, the commission directed their staff to withhold executing the lease until the CPUC had finished their proceedings. The commission felt that the CPUC was the best equipped to decide how many providers should serve Catalina Island. The commission requested the staff to return to the commission if the CPUC decision substantially affected the sublease on the landing dock. The CPUC decided in favor of open competition by awarding two additional freight providers CPNC. So you are correct, there are three holders. Despite the CPUC's decision in favor of multiple providers, the commission's staff executed the lease without returning to the commission for further authorization as directed in the June twenty-ninth meeting. In light of the staff's disregard of the Constitution and the commission's authorization, this council's voice is required to hold the commission accountable to do what they are required to do by law. We respectively request your letter of support for equal and open access to the California tidelands surrounding the Pebble Beach Essential Facility for all CPUC certified providers. I want to make it abundantly clear, we're not asking you to tell the island company what to do with their land. This is specifically to the state tidelands, the public lands. That's all we're asking. So by voting in support of sending a letter to State Lands, you are truly supporting multiple providers to Catalina. If you vote against this, there's no other way it can be contrived. You are voting for a monopoly. This is the state public lands that are trusted to this commission to do what's in the public's interest. That's all we're asking for with this letter. It doesn't show preference to Curtin Maritime, Avalon Freight, or Catalina Freight. It just specifically states, guys, we've got multiple providers. We want them, for the state land, to have open and equal access. That is the preference for the citizens of Avalon. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak?
Joanna Wojciewicz Arnold, 127 Marilla. Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I have a request. First of all, we've sent a few letters on the city of Avalon letterhead to the State Lands, the CUPC, and I want to make sure that, and even in the bond situation, that all letters going out on a Catalina, a city of Avalon letterhead are actually written by our city attorney and not by an attorney on either side of the issue. That seems like it's a conflict of interest to me, and it offers some bias. So anything that we do send to the State Lands should be written solely by our attorney. I know the opposing factions on either side say, oh, we're going to save the city money and compose a letter for you, but those are often one-sided and biased letters, and I feel that a few letters that we have read here from city council members have lawyer ease all over them and not written by our own lawyers on either side of the issues, whether it's bonds or this freight issue. I don't think anything should go out from the city. Yes, you as personal citizens can write anything that you want, but once you put mayor on it or councilman on it, that you're speaking for a whole city, and I don't, I feel that you should put something before the city that says, anything sent out from the city of Avalon should be written by our own lawyer and not by opposing factions. And I think that that should be true with anything that we send out. I don't think we should save money by letting these opposing factions compose letters for us. I don't think it's fair or right, and there's bias in those. And we're still discussing this. I know for a fact that Avalon Freight Services has gotten their certificate from State Lands, and they will be operating business as of August 1. All that information will be in the, April 1, all that information will be in the paper this week, but it was the delay of getting that information from State Lands that delayed the information going out to the public. But now that has been decided, it will go out to the public on Friday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, this isn't a time for debate, but I do believe the letters that have gone out under city letterhead, like the one to State Lands, was either written by you or me or Ben, so I think, I think the ones going out on city letterhead are pretty much ours or his.
It's all of us. It's a combination of everybody who has an input on it.
It's, yeah, I don't, I think, I think I remember writing one of them, I think Ben wrote the other, and what we do is we just take direction from the council, and it's been my practice, when I've written a letter for the city, then I will share it with the council before it goes out to make certain it accurately reflects the council's direction.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and write this letter to support the shared use of that ramp out at Pebbley Beach, please.
Well, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I will second. Call for the vote.
Discussion.
More discussion? More discussion? Go ahead.
Well, I'm looking at the transcript from the June 29 meeting, and on page 39...
2015.
2015, June 29, 2015. On page 29 of the transcript.
39.
39, thank you very much, I can't, my eyes are going, I'm almost getting old.
What page are you on, Ben?
39.
Okay. Yes.
On line, starting at line 8, there's a staff recommendation. Staff recommendation says that when AFS gets their CPUC certificate, they're authorizing the execution of the sublease. Then the next line says, should the CPUC decision substantially affect the terms of the commission's authorization as it relates to the lease and the subleases, staff will return to the commission. I don't believe that the CPUC's position effectively altered the commission's recommendation, because they were always talking about renting it to AFS. And the fact that there are other carriers, I don't think, I don't think it's applicable. I think it's apples and oranges.
Can we vote on this now?
Wait, I just have a, maybe this isn't for us to be, well, never mind, probably what I'm going to say isn't us to be concerned with, but there was a quote by one of the commissioners, Catherine Sandoval, that says, if needed Avalon, if indeed Avalon Freight were to basically collude with the dock owner in a way to deny reasonable access to rival shippers, that's an issue that would trigger an investigation and blah, blah, blah. I don't know that I should be concerned with that, but kind of I am. I mean, and maybe that's, that's a battle for another day, and it's not our battle, but when I, I don't know, I just, I just support open competition, so I feel we need to write a letter one more time to State Lands.
Hi.
But go ahead.
Okay, so I've been here at most of the city council meetings when this all was going back and forth with letters and sending letters here, sending letters there, you know. I was at one meeting when Ole said on record that he was stopped by the State Lands Commission, and he goes way back with them, and he said it on record, so who were you representing when you were discussing whatever you were discussing at State Lands Commission? Because you're sitting here saying you don't, you don't think that, you know, it should be our city council decision to send, you know, it shouldn't be our problem, it should be, let State Land Commission deal with it and make those decisions. Because if you didn't say that on record, then I wouldn't be up here questioning, because when you said that on record, Ole, it made me, as an audience and a resident, believe that you were, you were discussing issues and representing the city council. So I'm just, I'm confused here. Just enlighten me.
I stopped by State Lands to visit with people that I worked with before at the two harbors. I told them I was on the city council, I was available if they had any questions.
Okay.
I didn't argue one side or the other.
Okay.
And what I'm saying tonight is the fact that the commission's already taken the action, I'm not sure that a letter will help them undo the action they've already taken.
Okay, the commission did take action, but there's a state law that they need to, that is, it's a law, it's a legislative law, that, you know, they have to allow access, so...
They did it, they don't. The Constitution, the Constitution allows fleet to travel over the water, but they don't, they don't control private property.
It's not private property, it's public property.
We're not talking about going through, I'm talking about the...
There's a motion that's been seconded.
Look, can we vote on this?
Okay, thank you.
Motion and a second.
It's for the ramp.
It's for the ramp.
For the ramp, right.
Okay.
Once they get to the ramp, they can't do it.
Exactly. So it's been moved and seconded. Call for the vote.
Two ayes, Marshall Sampson, one no, Olson, two abstentions, Cassidy, Hernandez.
Great. And you can draft?
I'll draft the letter, I'll...
Just a real brief one, don't have to be...
Very brief one, I think I understand exactly what the issue is.
I want to read it before you say it.
Yeah, I will absolutely send it to three of you.
And only two? Of course, only two.
All right, of course, that's why I said three. All right.
Three hours, not bad.
Well, I thought that was going to go a lot longer. Oh, meeting adjourned. Second meeting adjourned.